Good afternoon. This regular meeting of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners is called to order at 3:00 PM on December 8, 2020. Today, we're -- Commissioner Dozier is going to be delivering the invocation and pledge. Has anyone seen him in the offices down in the hallway?
I don't see him.
Okay.
What have you got to do?
Let's see. Is anyone here would like to provide the invocation?
We've got to turn in the broadcast. We can go with everyone on that room.
Mr. Cummings, would you like to?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm honored to have our own Commissioner Carolyn Cummings provide the invocation, the lead and the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner?
We just turned it off. We just turned it off. We did. We did. Yes. Amen. Thank you. We will. With the allegiance to the flag, we honor citizens of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our goal.
Thank you, ma'am. That was terrific. Okay, let's move right on to awards and presentations. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the item?
We have under awards and presentations tonight, we've got an update on what about a proclamation, if I can get through that. One second here. I think I'd like to recognize Commissioner Dozier, recognizing your partner, Dr. Gary Ostrander, Vice President of Research for Florida State University.
We'll stand at a distance either side you want, Karen. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Mr. County Administrator. I am honored and a little sad and a little happy to be providing a proclamation today for Dr. Gary Ostrander, FSU's VP of Research since 2011. And I'm so glad that you and your lovely wife Frances has been able to join us today. This is personally significant, but also significant for our whole community. Gary was hired a year after I joined the commission, and we have worked together for the last nine years at Innovation Park and on a lot of different initiatives throughout the community on economic development, research, commercialization, and trying to grow jobs and keep entrepreneurs in our community. And every time I start talking with a mask, Mr. Chair, I have to get used to it again. So forgive me for that for a second. I have learned a tremendous amount from you, Gary, over the years, and one of the things that struck me as I was preparing for today is how much I value your joint commitment. FSU is your first focus, as it should be, and always looking out for FSU's interest. But within that, knowing that FSU is part of our community, how much the professors and the research dollars that we bring into this community benefit all of us and really go to strengthening our economy, how we can grow jobs. And that balance is exceptional, and I think you are, if we use that phrase, town and gown, you are the example of town and gown that we should hold up, and I hope your successor understands that, and he's got some very big shoes to fill. So with that, I will read the proclamation, and I also have to say thank you to your assistant, Kelly, who worked closely with my aide Gary to get just a snapshot of your work over the last nine years in our community. So, whereas Gary K. Ostrander was named Vice President for Research at Florida State University in May 2011 and began his role in growing the university's research enterprise. And whereas Gary K. Ostrander has grown the research portfolio to record numbers overseeing more than $200 million in research activity annually while attracting top-tier faculty in a variety of disciplines and forging partnerships with community leaders and businesses. And whereas, I'm just going to say Gary from now on. And whereas Gary led the research operation to a new funding record of $250 million to help scientific, to help fund scientific and creative activities. And whereas in 2013, Gary brought the largest private collection of Rembrandt etchings to Florida State for a special exhibition, a fortnight of Rembrandt selected etchings from the Mauer collection. And whereas in 2017, in response to the Zika crisis, Gary and Assistant Vice President for Research Eric Holmes were awarded $1 million to help facilitate drug development to treat the Zika virus. And whereas in 2018, Gary led the push to secure $8 million in funding from Triumph Gulf Coast for the FSU Coastal and Marine Laboratory to investigate the causes leading to the collapse of the oyster fisheries and to develop a plan to help the Apalachicola Bay recover. And whereas Gary was instrumental in restructuring of Innovation Park, leading to increased flexibility for FSU to expand research success and to create economic development opportunities. And whereas Gary was critical in securing a $2.5 million investment from FSU Research Foundation, making it possible for Innovation Park, the city of Tallahassee, and Leon County to receive $10 million from the U.S. Department of Commerce to build a high-tech incubator, business incubator at Innovation Park. And whereas Gary has served the community tirelessly through his service on the goodwill industries of the Big Ben Board of Directors. And whereas Gary has served as a faculty member of the College of Medicine and will continue his work at the college as a researcher, mentor, and a mentor to students. And whereas at the conclusion of his tenure, Vice President for Research Gary K. Ostrander has given us nine years of his time and energy to make Florida State University and the surrounding region a better place. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that today we honor and celebrate Dr. Gary K. Ostrander for his continuous devotion to the university, his family, and his community through his ongoing work to promote the scientific and creative work at Florida State University. We wish him well as he returns to his work on the faculty and as he spends time with his wife Frances, his son Chris, and grandchildren Liam and Olivia, and is dated today, the 8th of December, and signed by all of the commissioners and the county administrator. Thank you for your service toward the community.
Thank you. I'll just be very brief. You have a very busy agenda. Thank you so much. This is so, so nice. You know, when I first got here, I was at an event with then-President Eric Barron, and Eric said to the group that was assembled that Florida State University needs Tallahassee and Leon County, and Leon County and Tallahassee need Florida State University. And that really resonated with me as having responsibility for the research operation, and that's really been a guiding principle of mine for the last nine years, and that's the message I've left upon my office as we move forward. There's a lot of great things happening right now and be happening moving forward, and I wish you all stay safe and happy holidays. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I missed one very important thing that I think has remained to our next presentation. Gary was also instrumental in setting up a COVID testing lab at Innovation Park that has helped keep our students at FSU and faculty and staff safe throughout the last few months, and that is exceptional, and it's one of those examples of how universities are really taking care of their students. Thank you.
I should tell you that that lab also is testing everybody in the community, anybody who runs through nursing homes or TMH. So it's a community and FSU again. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier, and thank you, Dr. Ostrander. Any comments from the members of the board? Okay. Just really quick, Dr. Ostrander, I don't know if you remember this, but about five years ago, I came to see you in your office, and that's 45 minutes of conversation with you had a profound impact on the way I looked at economic development in this county. I walked out of that office with an illuminated perception of what we need to do as a community to move forward. And so I don't even know if you remember the meeting, but it was highly impactful for me, and I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for this county, for our economic development efforts, and everything you're continuing to do at FSU. And Commissioner Dozier, thank you very much for bringing up this proclamation. It very well deserves, sir. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Moving right on, Mr. County Administrator, the next item on awards and presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Good afternoon. As we've done since the very beginning of the pandemic, we have a brief update for you on our latest efforts related to COVID-19. As I reported to you in your daily briefings, the first COVID-19 vaccines are expected to be approved by the FDA as early as this week. The FDA is scheduled to meet on Thursday to consider an emergency approval for the vaccine developed by Pfizer, and a second vaccine candidate developed by Moderna is expected for an FDA approval hearing next week. I'm sure you've all heard a lot about this in the news, but we did want to provide a little bit of detail relative to vaccine distribution today. The state of Florida has developed a vaccine distribution plan, which will occur in phases based on a prioritization developed by the CDC. Our emergency management team has been working very closely with the state, both the Florida Department of Emergency Management, as well as the Department of Health, to provide local assistance. But we need to be very clear that this is a state-run effort. So for today's update, I would like to invite our Health Department Director Claudia Blackburn to provide more details on the state's vaccine distribution plan. I will just briefly note that there's also a separate item, Commissioners, on your agenda, providing a final budget expenditure and final fiscal closeout for Leon CARES programs, as well as an item seeking the board's guidance on the sponsorships related to community and athletic events. And as I mentioned at our last meeting, Commissioners, we also plan to bring you a detailed summary of our Leon CARES programs and their impacts throughout the community in January. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but at this point, I see we've got Claudia, and for a little bit more on the vaccine distribution plan, I'd like to hand it off to Claudia Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Mr. County Administrator, Ms. Blackburn, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and County Manager. So if you can't hear me, let me know. But the Department of Health is going to approach COVID-19 vaccination efforts similarly to the integrated planning structure of the H1N1 pandemic, influenza vaccinations that we do every year, and our hepatitis A vaccination program. Our planning process includes, as Vince said, our regular meetings convened by Leon County Emergency Management with a core group of partners that is expanding as needed, and also regular sector calls that where there are 150 different organizations represented. They cover education, hospitals, first responders, providers, Leon County Sheriff's Office. These calls are to update our partners so everyone will be standing ready to solidify plans as more federal and state direction is received. We are working closely with Leon County Emergency Management and meeting weekly to plan with the latest information. As you know, it's changing daily, and the emergency management and the Health Department staff listen to respective calls hosted by DEM and DOH every week, usually multiple times a week. So the first phase will be used to prioritize residents and staff of long-term care facilities and the highest-risk healthcare workers. The good news is that all of the long-term care facilities of Leon County are enrolled in the vaccine program and will receive their vaccinations through CVS and Walgreens. The plan is for vaccine to be shipped directly to the hospitals when available for the highest-risk healthcare workers. We are working with non-hospital healthcare providers so that they can also receive vaccine directly when it's available. When it is time to expand the vaccination program, we will revise our City Readiness Initiative Plan. This is a plan that is a CDC program originally designed after the anthrax scare for distribution of antibiotics to the entire population in Leon County through what we call points of dispensing or pods. It's really a vaccination station. We are using the revised plan, or we are revising the plan, to deliver vaccinations in a socially-distanced, safe environment. We are doing outreach to organizations who can support their own pods or can stand up a pod with augmented staff and supplies. And Leon County Emergency Management has been working closely with us to accomplish this goal, also taking into account community demographics, access, and equity. You know, for example, you know, we may have a special plan for people that are homeless or people that are elderly or homebound, individuals with physical and emotional challenges. All of that is being considered. We are considering sites for vaccinating the general population should we be tasked with that responsibility, and we will look for sites that can accommodate drive-through and curbside pods that are known to and accessible to the community and have a manageable flow of traffic. In addition, the CDC has contracts with retail chain pharmacies across the nation that when sufficient vaccine supply is manufactured and available, they will serve as community vaccination points similar to what we see for the annual influenza vaccination campaign. In addition, the Leon County Health Department Public Information Officer continues to convene the Joint Information Center, that's with PIOs from our partners, certainly from the county, to coordinate messaging. And Leon County is a major partner in educating the community in a variety of ways. I'm sure you've seen some of the billboards about flu. We plan to engage in a unified messaging campaign, and this is really important, with federal, state, and local partners so that the public understands the facts about the vaccine. Commissioners, I really want to thank you for your support with the CARES Act funding. It has been a tremendous help. It supports our contact investigators, our school health monitors, and numerous other staff that are responding to COVID. This funding will also assist with vaccination efforts should other funding not be made available. The, as I give this report, you've got to be aware, just like with everything else that happened early on with COVID, things are changing rapidly, so the vaccination plan is continuing to be revised, and you can look at the Florida's COVID-19 vaccination plan. There is a website, florida-covid-19-vaccination-plan, and that is where you can see the state of Florida's draft. You know, we all want to return to normal. We all want an economy and our schools to open, and we also want to protect our family and friends from the pandemic. Our finest medical researchers are clear, if we fail, there will be an even worse consequence for our families and our economy. We all have a personal responsibility to slow the spread of the pandemic and eliminate the virus as quickly as possible. This is really important right now as we see our numbers begin to creep up, and it is imperative that we take an effective, fact-based approach by doing things like wearing face masks and practicing social distancing. The vaccine is coming, but it's not here yet. We need to continue to do what we're doing to get through this so that we can return to a strong economy and normal day-to-day activities. And I thank you so much for your support in helping us to get that message out. We just, we need renewed energy on this, so appreciate everything, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. I don't see any speakers in the queue. Oh, actually, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one quick comment, and I don't have a question, but one quick comment. Claudia, I want to again applaud your staff and their work with not only the community at large, but also with our school system and our university systems here in Tallahassee. The work that they have done as far as going above and beyond the call of duty when it comes to contact tracing has been pretty phenomenal. I'm sure there are other counties that do it as well, but I'm not a commissioner in those other counties, and I can't tell you how much it means and how much it sets our community at an uncertain time at ease to know that we are doing an efficient job. So thank you for you and your staff. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Dozier, and then Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Claudia, as always, I could say ditto to everything Commissioner Jackson just said, and I'm really thrilled that the CARES funding came in at a time when you were able to hire more contact tracers. And I know we're going to discuss this in a little while, Mr. Chair, but being able to extend that funding into the new year, I think gives all of us, gives me, a lot of comfort that you'll be able to retain that staff. One of the things, and I'm glad you focused on the vaccine today, obviously, we've all been hearing a lot about that, and I trust you all are working very hard, as you have been all year, focusing on the plan, so I appreciate that update. The testing continues, and as you said, things are changing rapidly on the vaccine, but also our numbers continue to go up. I don't think it's as much as we've seen in other communities, thankfully, but my understanding is we may see the impact of the holidays just in the next week. We may not fully have realized that yet. Is that your sense? And I would assume that our advisory for our community is the same as CDC, that we should stay home during the next round of holidays, Hanukkah, Christmas, New Year's, and maintain our social distance from our family and friends. Is that right?
That's my understanding at this point, yes, that we should really try to avoid gatherings. You know, in terms of our local situation, it'll be interesting to see what happens since a lot of the students did go home for Thanksgiving, so that may change things. We still have a lot of, you know, college-age people that live in our community, and, you know, about 49% of our cases now are between the ages of 18 and 34. So it'll be, I think we just have to wait and see, but you're right, if we can avoid, if people can avoid gathering with others and maintain that social distance and wear masks right now, that would be really helpful.
Okay. Good point about the students. A lot of them did go home, and you may have missed this, but, Mr. Chair, that's why I wanted to highlight FSU's focus on testing. I think their work and families' work to really protect their own students and adjust their schedules has really helped us as a community, so I want to extend my thanks to them. For contact tracing, I haven't asked this question in some time. You and I talked about this in recent months, and I continue to hear that people are reluctant to give information for contact tracing when they might get a call. Is there anything we can do to help support your efforts by way of messaging or anything else to get people to understand that participating with contact tracers really does help our whole community?
No, I'm not really sure what that message would be, but getting people to work with the Health Department, to answer their phone, to give us the needed information would always be welcome. I do think having contact tracers that are associated with the universities is helpful because they're able to contact students more readily, and it is helping us to get in touch with folks and get information.
Okay, and just being comfortable that the information is private when they're talking to contact tracers, you may, there's been some fear associated with providing that information, is that right?
And that's always an issue. You know, we do contact investigations for lots of different things, you know, STDs and HIV, that's a big one. And it really is about having a trusting relationship with the investigator once that contact is made. So, you know, making that initial contact is really, one of the biggest challenges is having people answer their phone and talk to us. Once we do that, it's a foot in the door to get the rest of the information, so.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Chair, I just think anything we can do to help people, encourage people to communicate with contact tracers when they call would be really helpful. The last question I had on my list, maybe more for us than for Claudia, but if we start to see a spike, I hope we don't. I think we're maintaining just under 6% according to our update yesterday. If our numbers start going up, I'm just wondering if there's any need to have a special meeting before our meeting in late January. We have a pretty big gap here. I don't know what other measures we may have in our toolkit, frankly, on the county level, but I assume that as Chair, you can work with the county administrator and everything and call a special meeting if needed before January.
Yes, Commissioner Dozier, I'm going to follow the same type of protocol that Commissioner Deloche, Chair Deloche, followed prior, you know, earlier this year. Anything, any trigger, whether we have a spike in percentage cases, percent in flu or COVID-like illnesses in the hospital, I'm going to be working very closely with the county administrator, Ms. Blackburn, and others to make that determination. Should there be anything that even remotely comes close to, I think, what would warrant an action by the board, I definitely will be in contact with everybody.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Next, we have Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Blackburn, I had a constituent call me this week and ask about an uptick in suicides. Can you give us any information about that over the last six months? Is there any data that supports that? Obviously, you know, the mental health of our community is important, and this is a very difficult time, especially for young people. I think we've seen an uptick in the schools and failures. And so all of that is sort of playing into this mental health equation, and, you know, I know that this is just a very stressful time. Is there anything that the Health Department can provide in terms of resources for folks that are having mental health issues or struggling with isolation and things like that? And then, secondly, you know, we had a testing site at the Northeast Branch Library on Saturday, and the line was out on the road, so I think there's clearly an uptick going on. I know at Childs, we've had some increased numbers, just as of today and yesterday, more than we've seen. So I think that, you know, we need to remain vigilant, obviously, and the suicide thing is definitely a concern, the mental health stuff. So if you can comment on that at all, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. So I'm going to just address the second question. It wasn't really a question, but your second comment first. We are testing, in the last two weeks, about 2,222 tests per day, and I spoke with the incident commander at BRAG yesterday, and he said that actually their numbers were down a little bit, so I'm not sure what that means, but I'm glad that these mobile clinics in other parts of the community are being utilized, so that's good. We can keep up with the demand at BRAG, so that's also, we are in good shape when it comes to testing.
I know at Childs, we've had some increased numbers, just as of today and yesterday, more than we've seen. So I think that, you know, we need to remain vigilant, obviously, and the suicide thing is definitely a concern, the mental health stuff. So if you can comment on that at all, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. So I'm going to just address the second question. It wasn't really a question, but your second comment first. We are testing, in the last two weeks, about 2,222 tests per day. And I spoke with the incident commander at BRAG yesterday, and he said that actually their numbers were down a little bit. So I'm not sure what that means, but I'm glad that these mobile clinics in other parts of the community are being utilized. So that's good. We can keep up with the demand at BRAG. So that's also, we are in good shape when it comes to testing capacity in our community. As far as suicides go, I am familiar with the article that you mentioned. They looked at Tallahassee Police Department data. We don't have access to that immediately. We are going to request it. We do have access to provisional data from the Florida Department of Health Bureau of Vital Statistics for 2020. And in 2020, there were, there have been 37 Leon County resident suicides reported thus far. That is the highest number that we've had since 2012. That said, the numbers have ranged from 26 to 36 in that time period, like the last eight years. And so I don't know if that's a statistically significant increase. In addition to that, I've got some information from Big Ben 211. They show that, well, overall calls for basic needs, including mental health and addictions, increased by about 65% from April 1, 2019, through December 6, 2019, to the same period in 2020. The mental health and addiction calls actually went down from 936 to 868 during that same time period. So it's not exactly sure what that means. We will continue to look at this data, and, you know, hopefully we'll have firm numbers soon, and we'll get the numbers from TPD, and I will get back with you with more information.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Ms. Blackburn, thank you so much for the update. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I wanted to mention something that I heard the other day from Dr. Scott Gottlieb. He's the former commissioner from the FDA. He said some things that were very straight and to the point. Nationally, COVID is going to get much worse over the next six weeks, with cases peaking in late December or early January. The country unfortunately will see, he says will see, about 300 deaths a day, maybe close to 400, 3,000 deaths a day, maybe close to 4,000 deaths a day around mid-January. And the fatality rate of COVID has been relatively consistent. 1.7% of those diagnosed with COVID will succumb within 22 days. I say these because I want to drive home the point of the safety protocols that Ms. Blackburn has mentioned, but also here tonight. I really want to make sure that we, we're having a public meeting on very important issues that we need to discuss, and we need to hear public's feedback on those items. At the same time, I want to encourage everyone to be succinct when they talk and provide comments and deliberations. We need to balance the need to basically say what we need to say and deliberate with our health, safety, and the safety of everyone in this room. So please, throughout this meeting and during the public hearing, please keep that in mind. With that, Mr. County Administrator, are there any agenda items pulled from consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got three items pulled, three, 13, and 21.
Thank you very much. There are motion to approve from the Board the remaining items from the consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Mr. County Administrator. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on non-agended items?
Well, actually, on your items pulled, Mr. Chairman, just to go back to that, item three was pulled by Commissioner Minor, which is our legislative platform. I'm sorry, I'm just, I lost my technology for a minute, but it's back. So item number three is our 2021 state and federal legislative priorities, again, pulled by the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I just wanted to mention, talk about this very briefly and then move on. The Suncoast Connector report emphasizes that evaluating potential needs is a requisite before design begins. It also urges consideration of a no-build option. Both of those are good elements of the report. It also outlines environmental principles, highway safety, broadband consideration, et cetera. All those are good. What I want to do is I want to make sure that this Board, and it's on the record, that as this Board approves this report, that we stand by the notion that we need to have a needs assessment done for the Suncoast Connector before we spend taxpayer dollars. I think a lot of the public is rightly concerned about spending taxpayer dollars on a proposed road that may not be necessary if we can expand existing capacity or upgrade our existing road system. So I just want to make sure that, I looked at the report, it includes that. It also includes the principles that should be adopted or followed if the corridors is built, but I want to make sure that we had this on the record, that by approving this report, we stand by the notion that the report emphasizes a consideration for no build and that a needs assessment is a requisite before design starts. With that, I entertain any motion for this item. Motion was made by Commissioner Proctor and seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Dozier, you are recognized to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate pulling the item and great summary of the task force report. Thank you very much. You're absolutely right that the needs assessment was highlighted. I can speak mostly to the Suncoast, the northern portion, but the other two task forces, I think there was a lot of common language among the three. One thing I did want to just highlight in addition to what you've said is that there may be bills filed to make adjustments to the MCOR's legislation, particularly, and you all have heard me say this at our CRTPA meetings, anything having to do with the construction schedule or funding by DOT, we're locked into a very aggressive schedule, and we are worried about the impact to FDOT's five-year work plan and beyond. And that could impact a lot of local and regional projects. So I just wanted to make sure that, and actually, we may want to go ahead and say, I'm going to look for some direction, Mr. Chair, from your county administrator. I would like to see that as part of our legislative agenda, and I think we would be in time to bring that back in January meeting, to get our lobbyists working on anything like that. If you need any direction at this point, Mr. County Administrator, we can include that in the motion, but I do want to see anything come back in January, if that's acceptable, Mr. Chair, if we have bills filed.
Thank you, Mr. Dozier. Mr. County Administrator, do you need any further?
Nope. I think we've got it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Three, made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion is unanimous. Let's see, next item is Agenda Item Number 13. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda Item Number 13 came to you as requested by the Board, a simply review of Leon County's stormwater management facilities. It's been pulled by Commissioner Dozier, but since it was pulled, we have a one-speaker card and two speakers that have registered to speak virtually on this item.
All right. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. First speaker, please.
First speaker is Mr. Terry Ryan.
Mr. Ryan, welcome. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Terry Ryan. I represent the Tallahassee Siege Advocacy Group. My address is 2538 Stonegate Drive, and thank you very much for the opportunity here. Our group has looked at Item Number 13, the quality treatment standards, and think the staff did an excellent job on their analysis. But the big question we have is, how are the stormwater ponds doing? That's missing in the analysis itself. How are they doing physically? They talk about how much, how big they're supposed to be, how wide, deep, and so on, but there's nothing in there about ongoing reviews to see if they are actually working. The other thing is, is the, what is the monitoring program and how often are they visited and rated for meeting the standards physically? Second of all, as an attachment, there's a report from the Blueprint dated September 17th on the state and local stormwater, the water quality review. Very good summary, but let me point out that they have some very good slides in it that bring up very concerns. If you imagine here, Water Well Number 37 up in north part of Tallahassee, it started off several years ago at .25 milligrams. Munson Lake is at .47, indicated in the report, and then Wacola Springs is .40 to .50. There's definitely a relationship there between Munson Steel and Wacola Springs, and that's very concerning. There's something wrong, and there's nothing in the report to address those wrongs. The fertilizer ordinance looks very good. However, we would like to have the Commission here approve a moratorium during the summer months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan, sir. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers signed up to speak virtually on this item. Before I call on the first speaker, let me, a reminder to callers, you'll be identified by your name and asked to provide a comment for up to three minutes. For those joining by video, you may experience a few-second transition as we bring you into the meeting. When you're asked to speak, you'll be added to the meeting, and you'll be prompted to un-mute your device. And if you choose to activate your video, again, you'll receive an automated prompt to unmute your device. Once prompted, please state your name and address for the record, please. And again, keep your comments to three minutes. If you experience any technical difficulties during your call, please bear with us. If unresolved, we will move on to the next speaker. Thank you very much for that. And with that, we'll go to our first speaker on this item, Mr. Max Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, you have three minutes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record. On this Epstein, I think you're on mute.
Is that better?
Yes.
Are you hearing me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, excellent. I'll keep it short. Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Court. I appreciate the staff report that's been put together, especially the thesis, the summary, which says Leon County emphasizes passive stormwater management practices, including using wetlands and other LID techniques. And it's my opinion, I think that these should be required. These are best management practices that we should be using in all instances, and this will save the county and our taxpayers millions or tens of millions of dollars down the road. This means stormwater will be treated on-site before it's released into the public waterways. And if you think of FAMU Way and all the issues I've had with that project, including the final pond there, not actually having wetlands, it could have been much smaller and more efficient. But we instead have to build these facilities downstream, which cost tens of millions of dollars, instead of figuring it out while it's on campus before it's released. This also will help prevent displacement of vulnerable peoples and communities that are in these lower areas that are downstream. So along with the fertilizer ordinance that Terry mentioned, a strong one with Van in the wet season, this will put us in the forefront of tackling climate change and reducing our dependence on these facilities that aren't legally required to be sampled. And we'll talk about that for Agenda Item 21. And it will also, well, we'll just have to require less of this, and there'll be fewer maintenance and all sorts of other things like that. So I will address everything else in Agenda Item 21. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. County Administrator, our next speaker.
Next speaker, Danielle Irwin.
Ms. Irwin, thank you very much for coming. Please, for the record, state your name and address, and you have three minutes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Irwin, 3185 Ferns Glen Drive. I pulled, or I wanted to comment both on Item Number 13 and 21 because I think it represents the silo approach that we have to managing our water within both our county and our city. And I want to remind everyone the interconnectedness of water. So we have two agenda items, one that deals with stormwater, one that deals with water quality. The stormwater is more related to our managed ponds, and the water quality is more related to our natural water bodies. But water is interconnected in our county and doesn't recognize jurisdictional boundaries. It's affected by stormwater that picks up sediments and nutrients. It's also affected by our septic systems and our sanitary sewer systems and the integrity of those systems. All of these, if they go wrong and if they're not managed well, you end up having harmful algal blooms, aquatic vegetation, and other contamination and impairment of water quality within our water bodies. So the two points that I'd like to make in the remaining time of my comments, and this is both for Item Number 13 and 21, is that, one, we adopted in 2013 low-impact development guidelines for private developers, yet we're not applying them to ourselves. So we voluntarily, we asked developers to voluntarily do these activities, these low-impact development strategies, to reduce stormwater. So the first step is reducing stormwater, and that's what LID is set up to do. We ask private developers to voluntarily do it, yet we don't apply those own standards as a mandatory standard for ourselves. We, as a county, on public property and public projects, should be the example that we want private development to follow. So I encourage you to consider making low-impact development strategies mandatory for the county, and I would send that same message to the city. The second point that I want to make is a need for a watershed management plan. We have 25 watersheds within our county, and again, they flow across jurisdictional boundaries between the city and the county. We need to really create synergies between the city approaches and the county approaches as opposed, having those approaches be dealt with in their own respective jurisdictional silos. So let's get out of those silos, let's establish metrics for success so that we have a point where we're moving towards, instead of just looking at the BMP for waters related to that or just looking at a TMDL for whatever water body, and we have multiple in our county that it applies to. Let's look at it holistically across both stormwater and sanitary sewer and septic conversion-related issues. So part of this watershed management plan would look at both sides of those coins across both the city and the county, and it's not unheard of. In fact, more and more counties and cities across the state of Florida are moving towards this more comprehensive approach. I know that the city is considering a regional stormwater master plan, but that will only address one piece of the puzzle, and it will not include the county. We need to be dealing with this together because clean water affects everyone living within our county regardless of whether or not you're living in the city or the county.
Thank you very much, Ms. Irwin. Really appreciate it. And thanks to all the speakers for taking the time to provide feedback today. Mr. County Administrator, any of the speakers in the queue?
No, not on this item, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Would you please introduce the last item pulled from consent?
Well, I just wanted to, yes.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Just trying to keep things going.
You really want to move fast today, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see, as a person who's pulled the item from consent, Commissioner Dozier, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Danielle just did, I can probably wrap some comments in on both items, 13 and 21, but I'm, because the motions are different, I'm going to separate them. But I really do appreciate Danielle's focus on both of the items, and I think for Terry and Max, I just want to say thank you to all three of you, and there's another six or seven other people who have been working diligently on water issues, a whole range of things, and communicating with us a lot, in Blueprint and the city. So I just really appreciate their work, also the Water Committee. And I know they met last night, and I believe they were reviewing the fertilizer ordinance. So, Mr. Chair, that's actually where I wanted to start. This item highlights not only that Leon County and Tallahassee go beyond the state minimums for stormwater, but we also have a lot of innovative ideas that we've been focused on for years. And as many of you probably know, we have been leading the efforts on the BMAP process to clean up Wacola Springs and to get more septic to sewer conversion throughout the community. We receive a lot of money from DEP and others. So we've been doing a lot, and I would argue probably one of the leading counties in north and central Florida. A lot of our South Florida counties are doing a lot focused on water, but I really want to recognize how much hard work our staff has done in recent years. What I would like to do as a next step here is build on those efforts. And if you remember, we've got strategic initiatives in our strategic plan that focus on a holistic approach towards our water issues. And that was inspired, I have to give credit to our former FAC president sitting next to me, Commissioner Maddox. He created a Water Committee for Florida Association of Counties that I served on last year. So that really inspired those initiatives and looking at all of our water issues, from stormwater to septic sewer and water quality. So I think this report, and I'm going to highlight again what Danielle said, and I think some of the others mentioned this as well, it is a good, and Terry, you mentioned this, a good overview of what we're doing, but the metrics, the testing regimen, the maintenance regimen, I still have questions about how, what we're doing, and frankly, if our, the if our, the funds we have can accomplish the goal. It's my understanding, more from the city side, that it takes so long to maintain, to clean out, maintain these ponds and everything else, that it could be many years before we get into this rotation. That's not something we can address overnight. So my suggestion for this, what I'd like to see, and Mr. County Administrator, you could help me with this, this could be a project of our Water Resources Committee, but we could also ask staff to bring back an agenda item to look at what other communities are doing, to ensure that our commercial and residential stormwater ponds are maintained and tested as often as possible. I have that caveat, that I know funding is going to be a question here, but looking for those innovative strategies, could we work with our university students on testing? Are there other ideas that would help us in the future, to really get ahead of some of these issues that we see in our water quality? And we're just going to see the community grow. So this could look at incentives for developers, those low-impact development guidelines for ponds that we construct, for regional ponds, but also policies, maintenance schedules, things like that. Importantly, I think strategies to work with our city partners is going to have to be part of this. I'm glad they're looking at stormwater, but I'll just take one example, in District 5, a majority of the water coming into Upper Lake Lafayette comes out of Weems Pond. It's one of the examples in this item, and the city has done a lot of work to clean up the stormwater in Weems Pond, even just recently. But our lake is impacted directly from that stormwater. So really, having a partnership with the city is going to be critical throughout the community, to make sure that our water quality is the best it can be and continues to improve over the years. So again, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, and Mr. County Administrator, stop me if I need to clean this up a little bit, to have an agenda item come back with a review of what other communities are doing on maintenance, on testing, and on working with the city, and then also giving this to our Water Committee to brainstorm ideas about how to be more innovative in our stormwater management approach. Mr. County Administrator, any problem with how I've stated that?
Nope, we've got it.
Okay. So that would be my motion. It's an agenda item to come back with other issues, or, you know, other innovative ideas, and to give it to the Water Committee with a report coming back to us.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Is there a second on that motion? Mr. Welch, a second, did it? Next in line, thank you very much, Commissioner Dozier. Next, we have Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners.
Vice Chair Proctor.
This is absolutely a distinction between the aesthetics of ponds and ponding and lakes and residential lakes. The city built a stormwater pond in Frenchtown, promised the community it would be Lake Ella. And if you drive by there this afternoon, there is nothing in the community that looks like that. Lake Ella does not ever have what the stormwater that flows into the Strong Pond there off Georgia Avenue and that area. There's a pond in Bond Community behind Bragg Stadium off of Saxon Street. It's not well-maintained, and the city built those ponds there. And there's Lake Anita Pond that is likewise built with Savoy Club, used to be on Van Buren Street on Canal, which is now FAMU Way. And I'm really disappointed by the level, or rather, the lack of any level of maintenance that these inner-city ponds that really dump stormwater, that does not originate within those communities. I'm asking that staff would assert a bark, a bow-wow, a meow, or something for the city's commitment to maintain a higher aesthetic, a look, an ambiance, a treatment than what is occurring. There used to be a time when we had something in the state of Florida called the Department of Environmental Protection, and under the last three governors, something like this would have been a very important matter. And Teresa Heidecker, who's probably online, but she would have been in here to explain and cross all the Ts and all of that. But our program is not coming under strenuous review of the state of Florida's Department of Environmental Protections any longer, so we're going at our own speed, our own standard, and we're really without oversight. Now, lakes, which existed out of their own natural course of time, is that lake between Wanish Way and Adam Street, and bounded by Bragg Drive, and the northern boundary is Orange Avenue. And it's in a community, it's a residential lake called University Park, and school board member Maggie Lewis Butler lives there on that body of water, and it's on Mercury Drive. And I'm asking that the city look at that residential piece of body, and I'm telling y'all, there's not anything green in that lake. That was a lake people fish in. It had bonnet, it had turtles. I'd like to know what is the problem at that lake. Only two years ago, it, but the city has turned a residential lake into a dumping pond, and I'm trying to understand, did we agree, or did anyone agree, to turn a neighborhood lake into the city's stormwater runoff from Southwood? And then the second natural body of water that was not created like Frenchtown Lake, Anita Lake down at FAMU, in the lake, lake over there, behind Bragg Stadium in Bond, they were created. But the lake off of Creek Road, and bounded by North Ridge Road, and bounded by Civil Ridge Drive, and bounded by J. Gate Park Golf Course, which is a major tributary, that water is lousy. The city does not care about it. The water is in people's backyard, and it is as if there's been a governmental taking by water that is stagnated, is not treated, is dangerous, it's a mess. I'd like to know, did the city commission, or did the county, have we agreed to make a residential lake into another holding pond? I've got five ponds in Central City that are all a mess, and there's no standard. So this conversation in these pages, I don't know what, well, it's not in my district. I've got five big problems, and I want to throw in Lake Munson, which I gave up on and just figured that it was the offshoot for the spillout when the city sewer, just, they just dumped it next door. So I don't even count that one to try to treat that as a lake. But what happened to the other two, and why can't we clean and maintain the three inside of District 1? And if staff can please secure answers on those five lakes, this commissioner would be hardly and forever grateful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Mr. County Administrator, could, may I make a suggestion to accommodate your request, sir? Could we have the county work with the city on an update of what Mr. Vice Chair Proctor has recommended? You could even put that as an attachment in the upcoming agenda item that Commissioner Dozier has requested in her motion. Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. And then to wrap things up, we have Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can actually save these comments for Item 21. I think I can speak to Commissioner Proctor's comments, or our Vice Chair's comments. Thank you.
Okay.
I think it's more germane for Item 21, which is the next item that I pulled on water quality.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I really appreciate it. So the motion made by Commissioner Dozier, one point of clarification. Does your motion include Option 1, which is the acceptance of the report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion, if my second will amend that, to include Option 1, acceptance of the status report, an agenda item coming back to us, and referring this to the Water Committee for discussion.
Okay, great. And the second of the motion, Commissioner Welch also agrees with that. Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion as stated by Commissioner Dozier, say aye. Any aye? All opposed? The motion is unanimous. Thank you very much, Commissioner Dozier. Mr. County Administrator, next, and the last item pulled from consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item Number 21 is our annual Leon County water quality monitoring program status report. We have one speaker card here in the chambers, as well as two speakers that have registered to speak virtually on this item. And the first speaker here in chambers is Terry Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Mr. Ryan, again, sir, you have three minutes. Please, again, for the record, please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. Thank you. First of all, this is the annual water quality report that we always look forward to this time of year, and I'd like to commend Teresa Heidecker and also Johnny Richardson for putting it together. They do a fantastic job. We, with the Tallahassee Sewage Advocacy Group, are working on a ARC GIS map, which is going to be pulling in a whole lot of data and try to relate each contaminant to different things going on. And they have been super cooperative with us, providing sheriff files and everything to us. So thank you. Just pass that along to them, if you would. There's a section in this particular item here called Areas of Concern. I'd like to point out that the, there are high levels of E. coli in several creeks around town that the different water quality reports are showing. The source that they indicate in the report are septic systems, which we are not surprised with, but also sewer system problems, just in line with the concerns that we've been voicing in recent months. Interestingly, the report also indicates that they are going to be doing, or have already done, MST analysis. This is very important. This identifies animal type of sewage versus human, and this is something that is very top-notch, top-scientific-notch. It uses sucrose and things like acetaminophen to identify sewage as being human, and that's what we're going to be doing in doing our exfiltration studies around town. So they're going to be commended for some very top-notch work there. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, Mr. County Administrator, our next speaker.
We have two speakers that have signed up to speak virtually on this item. The first speaker is Max Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, welcome, sir. As before, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. This is Max Epstein again, 1001 San Luis Road. Commissioner Proctor, you gave me a lot of stuff to jump off on, but I just want to reiterate Danielle's point of our need for a joint city-county watershed management plan, so we're all on the same page. And you should have independent eyes looking in on this as well to assist, because we sometimes need someone to tell us the truth, right? And so I would, that's my number-one ask. Mr. Proctor, you talked about these ponds that are being built and not maintained. I forwarded everyone my comments to DEP about the Capital Cascades Trail that's been constructed by Blueprint and this new ponds for Boynton Still, because the city's own report shows all of these issues, cyanobacteria blooms, trash, and maintenance equipment problems. And I don't really see a whole lot going on, and we are encouraging people to be around untreated stormwater, which has thousands of acres worth of pollutants, and now toxic and can be deadly to animals, cyanobacteria blooms. And those are all over the place. There is technically no requirement to test these ponds, according to the city and DEP. That may be true, but the question is, do we want to do what is legally required or what's right? Because these are supposed to be amenities for people, and like you said, Mr. Proctor, you know, the water runs south, and it's really affecting people. Every single pond, Frenchtown, you know, Lake Alberta, all these were historically black neighborhoods that turned because they're the lowest point. And I don't know if this board is aware, but the city, and I say secretly, only because it did not appear before the city commission and didn't have any public comment, I only knew about it because I signed up for DEP's permit notification system, the city obtained a conceptual permit to create another stormwater pond the size of Lake Alberta across the street in the Alberta Empire Neighborhood. Why wasn't there public comment? Does the county know about this? Does the city communicate with them? I know they do, and they're good people, but we all need to be on the same page. We must know that these projects are equitable, because we cannot just keep retrofitting and building big facilities. The Boynton Still Pond only filters out 1,000 pounds of nitrogen per year. That's not a lot for five acres, and it's not following the LID techniques, like Danielle said, for construction by using created wetlands. Drink the size of the pond, put pumps in it, circulate it. So I recommend that, plus expanding the sampling stations to...
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Time is up, sir.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mr. County Administrator, our next speaker.
Next speaker, Danielle Irwin.
Ms. Irwin, thank you very much. Please state again your name and address for the record, ma'am.
I, Danielle Irwin, 3185 Ferns Glen Drive. I said my points under Item Number 13. I would just point out to everyone to remember that this water quality data is for unincorporated counties. But, you know, I leave it with the encouragement to apply low-impact development standards, first and foremost, to reduce stormwater concerns, and then shift to more of a comprehensive management under more of a watershed management plan approach, with the synergies of both the county and city strategies working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. And Mr. County Administrator, are there any other speakers who wish to speak?
There are none.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Dozier, as the commissioner who's pulled this item, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason why I wanted to hold my comments about Commissioner Proctor's description of those city ponds that have a lot of issues, we know they do, there's a lot of problems throughout the county, city or county, that may have certain challenges based on when they were constructed, where they are, other things like that. As I said before, I know that there's a lot of different issues associated with maintaining ponds, and not all ponds are the same. But for our water quality, it goes well beyond just our stormwater facilities. And this report, as the stormwater report shows, that Leon is innovative, is doing a lot of things really well. It kind of reminded me of recent issues on Lake Talquin that our county attorney's office is dealing with, and we were even working on water quality issues that are coming from Georgia into Leon for years and years. We really step up to the plate when we have specific issues like that that we need to address. What has come, I think, front and center through my work with the Water Committee at FAC, and through working with citizens like those we've heard from today and many others, is this concept for a watershed plan, and that really working with the city hand-in-hand. We have environmental minimum standards, we have a joint planning department, we have a lot of ways, Blueprints, others, that we work hand-in-hand with the city, but we don't work as closely on water issues. I want to caveat that, I believe, and I hear from citizens all the time, that our staff works very closely. And, Mr. County Administrator, that, I appreciate those comments every time they come back to me. But on the policy end, thinking about those areas, whether it's the Cascades Trail and all of the ponds we're doing... those areas, whether it's the Cascades Trail and all of the ponds we're doing through Blueprints, and then going into Cascades Four, I know they're looking at innovative ideas for that one, but that gets right into Munson and on down to Wakulla Springs. This is a city and county issue. Water doesn't know the boundaries, obviously. So it has come to light, I've seen some examples where there are county-wide watershed management plans, or even regional watershed management plans. I do wonder if our surrounding counties, our neighbors in our MPO, Jefferson, Gadsden, and Wakulla, may be interested in talking to us about these issues in the future. We've worked closely with Wakulla on cleaning up Wakulla Springs over the years. But for our purposes today, I'd like to, and I will include acceptance of the report in this motion, so accept the report and ask for an agenda item to come back that looks at how other communities do a comprehensive watershed plan, that looks at water quantity and quality, and works cross jurisdictions. So it would be working with the city of Tallahassee. And I think, Commissioner Proctor, that may get us to some of those questions that you're asking, not pond-specific, but just better ways we can work together to assess our water quality throughout the community. So again, it's accept the status report and have an agenda item come back that looks at options for a watershed management plan. And, Mr. County Administrator, I know there's some suggestions to hire consultants. We heard that from Mr. Epstein. I think just looking at our options for developing that type of plan would be helpful. We have a lot of resources in our community, but if you could look at those options, I'd appreciate that as well. So that would be the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Is there a second to the motion that Commissioner Dozier stated? Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Next in the line to speak is Commissioner Proctor, or Vice Chair Proctor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the heels of Commissioner Dozier's comments, I think that the significance of the three ponds that I have mentioned, what's very, very significant, and which really strikes me, I know, we all know, water has to go somewhere. Yet, the three urban ponds, including, well, excluding the one on Lake Brafflet Road, owed by Whataburger, which the city dug up to run water from the stadium, but it would not flood FSU Stadium. So it used to be the Alberta Grape Factory where economic activity occurred. The city thought it righteous to dig a deep hole, put water in. But the ponds I'm talking about, these people's lives were disrupted, communities were disrupted, and legacy of heritage neighborhoods were destroyed in exchange for the city digging holes out of where affordable housing, generations had lived and grown. And somebody made the decision that it was okay to disrupt black neighborhoods, they put water coming from white neighborhoods into. That's just the reality. Black neighborhoods are destroyed by the city of Tallahassee. People are jettisoning like cargo overboard to accommodate water from white neighborhoods. They not flood. So commitment from the city was, in particular for the one down at Strong, in front of Strong and John's Funeral Home, and right there by Little St. Mary, Prunty Baptist Church, it's gonna, it's gonna, you won't be disappointed. It's gonna be fabulous. It's gonna be great. It's gonna be a meeting place. It's gonna be a great space to come and da-da-da-da. It's not that. And I just don't think that you tear up a neighborhood just to dump trash in. You call it water, but what it really is, is a trash yard with trash water. And water is trash if it's not usable. Nothing swims in it. You can't wade in it. I ain't never seen nobody throw a fishing pole out there at it, a reel. It's trash water. And I could fall off this sheet of paper, and that's trash. That's what water is when it has no use. That's what is occurring. So my appeal is in the interest and name of what was sacrificed just to put trash in the presence of the rest of the community that's there. It's just not fair to tear down existing neighborhoods, to dump trashy water in, and do nothing, and leave it there. And then we talk about Wakulla Springs, and we got to protect Wakulla Springs. And we stood up for Lake Lafayette. I think we burnt the bottom. We stood up for Lake Jackson. We paid money to take the muck off the bottom. We burned the bottom. We stood up for Lake Ammonia. We set the bottom on fire when the lake dried up. We stood up for that lake. We done stood up for everybody's lake and every piece of water. We have stood up, put money, burned the bottom to help oxidize. All of those things environmental. But we've not done that. And them five urban ponds I'm telling y'all about, and I don't understand why. And I'm asking for fairness with respect to the cleanliness of the water. And it's just true. It's a difference. And we have put money to burn a lake, you know, that's interesting, Nick, but burn the lake, you know what I mean? We burned the lake. We burned the lake, and then we scraped it up. And we never did that to nail one of them five ponds. So the equity issue, historic issue, we hurting right now for affordable housing. And I'm about to suggest that if we just cover them ponds up, duck that water, put some dirt down there, and rebuild them neighborhoods is what we need to do. I would like to see a study that comes back that we cover them holes up, reroute that water to wherever hell it goes, or heaven, wherever. And let's rebuild the neighborhoods that once upon a time was there, and go back to what was there, the old landmark. Because this ain't working out, all this water that's trashy input, that lady said, toxic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. I need to try to find that right balance between making sure we all have a chance to deliberate on these issues, which are really important, but also understanding that we're in the middle of a pandemic, and we have to have safety precautions that we follow. With that in mind, Commissioner Cummings, you're next to speak, ma'am. Yes, Commissioner Cummings.
Okay. I apologize. Can you hear me now? I just basically, Mr. Chairman, echo Commissioner Proctor's concerns about the stagnant waters in some of the neighborhoods, one of which is close to property that I own in the Frenchtown area. Echo Commissioner Dozier's concern as well, the stormwater runoff. And we certainly had constituents address those issues the short time I've been on the commission, by telephone, conversations, what have you. And so I support the motion, of course, I second the motion, if it encompasses also the concerns raised by Commissioner Proctor. And hopefully it does.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Mr. County Administrator, have you?
That's the way we have recorded it, include Commissioner Proctor's comments.
Great. Commissioner Dozier, do you accept the items mentioned by both Vice Chair Proctor and Commissioner Cummings as part of your motion for a future agenda item?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And I thank both of you for your comments and your support on the second, Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner Welch. I just wanted to say that I may be, as always, looking at the process pieces. That's where my mind goes of how to assess these things. The real-life examples and looking at some of these issues are critical. And I think we work together well when we can kind of bring both of these. I'm really hopeful that this will take the good work, or build on the good work we've done, but really take us to the next level. And working with the city is critical in this. We have to do that, and this is the time to really step up that work. And I just really appreciate the board's support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Really good discussion on this item. Seeing no more speakers, all in favor of the motion as stated by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Cummings, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We are done with the items pulled from consent. Next on the agenda, we have citizens to be heard by on non-agenda items. Mr. County Administrator, who's the first speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one speaker card in chambers and one speaker who is registered to provide comments virtually. The speaker card that I have in chambers is Terry Ryan on non-agenda items.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ryan, again, sir, you've got three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Terry Ryan, representing the Tallahassee Sewage Advocacy Group, 2538 Stone Gate Drive. These comments are directed to Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner, we understand that in follow-up to our group's opinion article recently regarding the city's transparency and sewage issues, that you were very concerned that we did not list any information about the South Side issues. Let me assure you, we apologize, and we are very, very concerned about the South Side. In fact, as you may know, as the commission may know, the city's undergoing infiltration input I&amp;I study right now, and they have identified four areas in the South Side as having high infiltration issues. If I can, we have a map here. Down at the bottom left-hand area and bottom area there, that's the South Side. I don't think you can see it, but maybe you can, the yellow marks, those are pump stations that have been identified with a high infiltration area. And that's also an area that we were very concerned with, because it has a high clay piping area, which is subject to a lot of spills. Unfortunately, on the West Side, Mr. Jackson, there are four areas there, pump stations that have a concern. And up in the North Area, unfortunately, Mr. Welch, there are some areas up there and some others around town. I'd be glad to email this to you, Mr. Proctor, and wish you'd be able to come out. We'll be glad to sit down with you at any time in the future. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. Mr. County Administrator, do we have any other speakers?
We do not.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving on to general business, would you please introduce the next item? Mr. County Administrator, the virtual person did drop off the lines.
He dropped off, yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Maddox. Next item, sir, number 23.
Thank you, Commissioners. This item recommends board approval to negotiate and purchase the building Housing Supervisor of Elections Voting Operations Center. As the board is aware, under the existing lease, we have had issues relative to repairs of the roof and roof leaks. This item provides the board with an analysis of the supervisor of elections' existing voting operations facility, and provides several viable long-term options for the supervisor of elections to remain at the current location in a fully functional space. As recommended, Commissioners, purchasing the facility, in summary, will allow the county to ensure the existing investment in the current location is protected. It supports the county's previous deliberate efforts to consolidate the supervisor into one location. It provides the supervisor with space that continues to meet the office's needs into the foreseeable future. And it offers an approach that can be financially advantageous to the county in the long term. As explained in detail in the item, Commissioners, the county can finance and pay for the purchase, including any necessary repairs through the existing annual budget. Commissioners of Supervisor of Elections who see Mr. Early is here is fully supportive of remaining at their existing location with the mitigation of any outstanding building maintenance issues being addressed. And if the board approves moving forward with the purchase of the building, staff will proceed with negotiating a purchase, obtaining two appraisals, seeking competitive financing with the assistance of the county's financial advisor. And of course, we'll bring all that back to you in a future agenda item for the board's approval for the purchase and the associated financing. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and we're recommending option one. And Commissioners, we, I'm just checking to make sure we have no speakers on this item.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Maddox is speaking, is recognized, and then Commissioner Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I almost feel like I'm conflicted on this, as much time I've spent at the Supervisor of Elections office.
He needs an office over there, you know?
He's got a cot.
I've seen the operations over there. Our supervisor's done a great job of building a operation over there. And I think it's right to let him stay. Not just let him stay, but those predecessors that come after him whenever he decides to move on, be there, call it their building as well. So I make a motion for option number one. Thank staff for their diligence on this and their vision, long-term vision on this, and thank the supervisor for what he's built and his opinion on the vision that's shared between the county, the board, and the Supervisor of Elections. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Fully agree. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. So the motion is made for option one, and seconded by Commissioner Welch. Vice Chair Proctor, you're next to speak.
Thank you. First of all, I do agree that Commissioner Maddox should have a designated office. I want first to indicate that Supervisor Early, first and foremost, this is not about brick and mortar to me, but the integrity that you bring to the setting of bricks and mortar that bears the name of Supervisor of Elections means a lot to all of us in Leon County, North Florida. You maintain a high standard of efficiency. You had a record turnout this past election. And with the assistance of Commissioner Maddox, you and him, y'all, y'all did a great job. And we did not here. And I think that in no election history has so much angst, an anticipated, focused review was on supervisors across the nation. And God knows that your office stood tall. And I did not receive, I didn't receive complaints. So I want to salute you, commend you, and your staff for the excellence of upholding a democratic American election. It was of the highest and best quality. Thank you for that. Now, to talk about bricks and mortar, which is levels down, I see that we would save $2 million using a 20-year window. A 20-year is about four elections, national elections. And I imagine, in my understanding, is that there would be space that in purchasing the building, that you have not built out the totality of the space which would be on the roof that would be owned by Leon County. Is that accurate? Is that accurate?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, are you asking, is the question that you're asking, is that, is there additional space that's associated with this purchase? There is an additional 15,000 square foot associated with the purchase of this.
Okay. And with 15,000 square feet, I was looking at an agenda item called the Children's Services Council. And because they are required to, I didn't see anything that prohibited the Children's Services Council from renting from Leon County. There's no prohibition. And the fact that it would be an available site with parking and a well-lit, well-known piece of property, I just thought that it should, we should acquire this in addition to the fact we may be able to recoup a rent from the Children's Services Council at a very well-established site. 15,000 square feet would more than accommodate children's services and all like that. But it also could accommodate an expansion for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, which could greatly benefit from improved office situation. So those concerns being mentioned, we want to bid you well in the continuation of an outstanding office. And I definitely want you to get 2022 right. I mean, we need you to get 2022. So I'm supporting this, and I think that we are advancing. We have excellent supervisor. I mean, this will advance us in the ownership of a building. And then, I went out there this summer... And then, I went out there this summer and just did a drop-in, no notice, supervisor didn't know I was coming, and because I was concerned, all the national talk, and I wanted to make sure that Leon County is tight and right. And I went out to speak with Challenger, talk to supervisor, and he showed me some issues in the structure, and it almost broke my heart to see water coming down through the roof that threatened elections equipment. And that would have been devastating, but we do have the need to repair that roof, and I was glad to be there on a rainy day to see it for myself. So Vince, I thank you for your leadership and our staff making sure that this supervisor and subsequent supervisors will be well taken care of. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Next, we have Commissioner Dozier and then Commissioner Welch to wrap it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Supervisor Early, I just wanted to say every presidential election year is extraordinary. I'm not sure anything will top this one, but for maybe 2000, which you also survived, and set Leon County as a standard for how to run elections, but also how to communicate with the public and let them know that our elections are secure in all the different ways that you can turn in your ballot. I appreciate your recent comments on that. Thank you for continuing to represent our community and our state very well, and to all of your team and your canvassing board who work so hard through the elections. I think this is a great item, Mr. County Administrator, and I'm happy to support it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Welch, wrap it up.
Yeah, just real briefly, I think it was Commissioner Jackson that seconded the motion, but I would throw it if I could. Just want to say real quickly, thank you Supervisor Early. As a first-time candidate, you made running for office a very pleasurable experience on the paperwork side, so thank you. I think you do a great job. I think your staff does a great job. I'm glad to fix your roof.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. So that's not since the discussion has concluded, let's move on to a vote. All in favor of option one, motion made by Commissioner Maddox and as corrected by, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Supervisor Early, thank you for everything that you do. We're very grateful to you. Mr. County Administrator, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item provides a report of the projected budget and expenditure of all Leon County CARES assistance programs to the end of the current calendar year. As you'll note in the item, some of the Leon CARES program areas are projected to have unexpended funds remaining by December 30th, which is when the county's sub-grant agreements with our partner agencies expire. Accordingly, this item seeks the board's approval to reallocate these remaining program balances to existing Leon CARES programs to continue supporting the highest public health and human services needs in the community. The item before you, Commissioners, contains much more detail, but as a brief summary, these recommended final allocations include continuing support for enhanced testing and contact tracing through June 2021 in partnership with the County Health Department, additional support for pop-up testing in partnership with our three local FQHCs, funding to support local homeless services providers' ongoing needs related to the pandemic, additional community mental health services, assistance to Second Harvest and the Big Bend to expand meal delivery services, and funding to support technological needs for childcare providers who are licensed with the Early Learning Coalition. In addition, Commissioners, this item recommends the acceptance of an additional $11 million allocation from the Florida Housing Finance Corporation to support the Leon CARES Individual Assistance Program. As your agenda item discusses in detail, Commissioners, the Florida housing program has a significant portion of CARES Act funding remaining that must be spent by December 30th, and we were happy to help them in doing that. Our Leon County Housing Office has been working closely with them over the past several weeks to secure this additional funding allocation for housing and utility payment assistance. This funding allows us to fund most of the eligible applicants for the Individual Assistance Program that have not yet been awarded due to the exhaustion of our initial program funding, and it also allows us to reallocate $6 million to support our Small Business Assistance Program, which is our recommendation here today. To date, Commissioners, we have funded approximately 3,000 individual assistance applicants, and this funding will support an additional approximately 1,600 applications. In addition, Commissioners, the Small Business Assistance Program, to date, we have funded over 600 local small businesses, with over 300 more to be paid through this additional allocation upon your approval today. Finally, Commissioners, I'll just provide one brief note, which is that we are uniquely positioned to receive this funding as a result of the design of our assistance programs, which align with the Florida Housing Finance Corporation's program requirements. Also, as a result of the enhancements approved by the board in September, we were able to quickly process these applications and spend these additional funds prior to the FHFC's December 30th deadline. And as we've noted in the item, Commissioners, we intentionally continued to accept applications for our assistance programs in anticipation of additional funding potentially becoming available with that. I'm happy to answer any questions, Commissioners. As I've said before, I just wanted to give our staff, especially the staff in our Housing Department, Shinkton Lamy, Matthew Wyman, and Alex Rose, particular credit for this. And again, with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. We're recommending options one and two. We've received two written comments on this item. We have three speakers signed up to speak on this item and none in person, so we do have three virtual speakers registered to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Would you please recognize the first speaker?
First speaker, Max Epstein.
Mr. Epstein, thank you for being here. Please, as before, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes, sir.
Can you hear me? Because I can't.
Yes, Ms. Epstein, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, I actually didn't remember signing up for this item, but I know that I've been very lucky with the Leon CARES Act, and my business has enough money now to reopen, but I'd like to see this go for everyone else, especially those who really need it. And because I know a lot of people have applied after money, especially for small businesses and minority-owned businesses that need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Next speaker, Mr. County Administrator.
The next speaker is Deborah Novak.
Ms. Novak, please, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record.
This notion that when they get up and buy like a $25 million team, you can be succeeded of course. You might have heard a lot of references.
Ms. Novak, can you hear us?
Yes.
You have three minutes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record. Thanks for being here.
My name is Dr. Debbie Novak. I am the manager for 2616 Mission Road, which used to be Mission Road Apartments, and it is now Mission Grove Apartments. It's now Oakwood Reserve Apartments. And I did have the opportunity to have my questions answered by one of the gentlemen who called me earlier, so I won't go through those unless you think they're pertinent to other people. Our concerns were with the Leon CARES program and the change where residents receive the money directly. We've had several residents say we got money, but we are not going to pay you for it, so we were looking at trying to figure out how we might work with our residents on doing that. We are workforce housing. We are remodeling the project and renovating it. It's a 1960s genre property, and we're just really concerned that we maintain a workforce housing position and that we're able to work with the tenants in order to mitigate some of the adverse effects of the COVID-19 shutdown. So I won't go through my questions unless you think it's pertinent for other people.
Well, thank you, Dr. Novak. I think how much time, if that, I think that's all right, Mr. Dr. Novak. Thank you very much. I think we've got one more speaker, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, that last speaker dropped off the line, so we, that was our last speaker on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, Vice Chair Proctor, you are first to speak, and then Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my comments assault Commissioner Dozier in tenor and in tone and in intent. It's not a facsimile, but it's a real question. I'm a little bit concerned about process, and I know that time is ticking and we're under grave constraints. Yet, on the $51 million we received, I was a little miffed that the board was not workshop and we didn't get to spend the money, but the list came to us kind of ready-made. Today, part two, we're trotting through the same pace that our staff has decided what they want us to decide on. I don't like that. And the last time I attempted to make a motion to adjust some numbers, everybody acted like our staff had got the word from Mount Zani, and I don't think that Mount Zani, that no tablets came down, which was the law. This issue really should have been workshop, I think, as a process, and it puts us all on the spot. But I think that, Mr. Chair, you should give our Commissioners a chance to, I mean, if they're all made up and cool and happy about this, but we all, on this second chance, get determined whether or not we want a honey bun, a Ikey Mike, a Snickers bar, something. And I would just like to say, in that spirit, because this comes to us as a staff recommendation, it's recommended. There is nothing that says you shall, you must, you got to. It's a recommended. And because of that, money reflects value. And I was hopeful with that $11 million that we could split that thing even Stephen 50/50, even though I know that also I received communications that none of our non-profits ain't at the table. You could say that the Health Department was a nonprofit. You could say that Mental Health is a nonprofit. I get that. But I've received, and I'm sure Commissioners have received inquiries that show and suggest that nonprofits are there. But I want to recommend, and I'm not trying to hog it or anything like that, it's just that I ain't get a chance to say nothing about this money. And we have a total of $15 million with the $4 million left to be spent, the $11 million that we got new, so we got a grand total of $15 million. I think that, I think that bond and famu have been on the front line, have tested over 100,000 citizens. I don't know why they don't, $4 million frontline exposure, front-ending costs. I would like to see us take that 715 to a million dollars. And I don't know why we giving the Florida Department of Health, Health Department $2 million and giving the FQHCs 700. Why is they giving only 25% of the Health Department? The Health Department has the state. They have given us numbers of which the governor's being challenged that he's suppressing. This is the news, not me. Schools suppressing numbers, government suppressing numbers, universities suppressing numbers. What we giving them $2 million to suppress? But let's give the money to the folk down there in the trenches, and I would like to see them, I'm not trying to make a motion and lock anything in, but I trust, Mr. Chairman, you respect each of us on such an important matter that none of us have had a workshop around. I would suggest, sir, that we give the federally qualified, the famu, the bond, a million dollars, that we would take that $11 million and split it between the business category and the others, and not do it at a 6-4, but do it at 5.5 and 5.5, and I'll stop and allow you to direct your meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Maddox is next to speak, and then Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank staff for their hard work. I think these funds are evenly distributed. I've received a lot of emails in terms of businesses that were really looking to see us put more money into the small business piece of it, and I've also received emails with people, with citizens interested in seeing if we could distribute a few more dollars there, so I'm pleased to see that we've moved in that direction. Commissioner Proctor, I think what you're asking for is fair as well. I'd like to hear from the rest of the commission before we move forward with any motions, but I could take it either way. I could take what we have here, working right now, I think is fair, or I could also hear what everyone else says about Commissioner Proctor's proposal as well. So, Mr. Chair, thank you for recognizing me. I would be ready to make the motion, but at the same time, I want to hear other comments as well. Thank you, sir.
So Commissioner Maddox, just to clarify, are you making a motion for option one? Okay. Next speaker, Commissioner Dozier, and then Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did receive an email, I think we all did, about nonprofit funding. There was a later email that acknowledged through further conversations with staff that, I think the words were, it's actually, we're retracting our request for that additional funding. And my understanding was that the reallocated dollars will help those small businesses and individuals who are already in the queue to receive funding. Is that right, Mr. County Administrator?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So we did provide a lot of nonprofit support. I'm really glad that we approved that at our September meeting. And Commissioner Proctor, I actually have to disagree with you on this one, that I think even though we didn't have time for a full-blown workshop, because things have been moving so fast, we have had an opportunity to get engaged and tweak some of these programs. We upped the individual assistance, we upped the small business assistance, we added nonprofit. I think all of those changes were very good, but that built on top of the incredible work that our county staff has done to not only analyze what the needs were, but set up the program to get the money out the door. If I'm reading this correctly, of $51 million, we're on track to spend almost all of it by the end of the year, which was the original deadline, and that is just extraordinary. I mean, for all of our staff, and as Ms. Novak said, and a number of others have said, if they got a question, they're getting a call from staff within hours, and that is really impressive. I mean, I've heard that from others as well, and I think that came through in the nonprofit emails. So I am happy where we are. I think the reallocated dollars hit some of the high points that we were talking with Claudia Blackburn and others about, including Mental Health. Commissioner Welch, I'm really glad you brought that up. Those numbers were very interesting, and I've been concerned about the same, and across the board. The last thing, Mr. Chair, is that to a person, if we're at Second Harvest Food Bank, if we're talking with our nonprofits, our businesses, sole proprietor like Mr. Epstein or others, I hear thank yous to our staff continuously, and the housing money is just extraordinary, what our staff has been able to do, working with Treasury, with Florida Housing and others. So I think we're in a good place, and Commissioner Maddox, if you're, I thought you were going to make the motion, but I'll make, hey, no, I'll make motion for option one and two. You can have a second. There we go.
All right. Motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Thank you very much. Next, we have Commissioner Cummings and then Commissioner Welch.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My comments were along the lines with Commissioner Dozier as far as the nonprofits, and then I agree that there was concern from a nonprofit who, after receiving a response from the county, who withdrew their concern. However, I received several inquiries from different nonprofits as well who weren't necessarily satisfied with the response. This is why they weren't included in the recommendations and options that we have before us. So in the interest of transparency, I would just like for, Mr. County Administrator, if you're in line, if you're just like for, if the County Administrator, if it's in line, if the County Administrator could have addressed, could address that, because I, I always believe that every interested entity should be at the table, shouldn't be excluded. So, if we, if I can, um, ask the County Administrator to address the lack of, at least what we have before us on the outline, is the exclusion of nonprofits.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I know they're a very intricate part of our community, and they're valuable direct services to our citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to do it, Commissioner Cummings. We, uh, obviously, uh, the, the nonprofit community has been central to our overall efforts. Um, just a reminder to the Board that the program to date has included, um, two separate, uh, grant, uh, grant programs targeted specifically to nonprofits. Uh, those have exceeded to date over 4.4 million dollars. Additionally, we've contracted directly with our nonprofit partners for almost additional $8 million in direct service, um, delivery, uh, through the CARES program. Uh, the reason that the recommendation before you today is what it is, um, of that 11 million, 4.4, um, uh, is, is required to go, uh, to the Individual Assistance Program based on, uh, Florida Housing Guidelines. The remaining 6.6 million is fungible, if you will. It, it, the Board certainly has the ability to, to give, to provide us direction, otherwise, on that, on that 6.6 million. The reason we were making the recommendation that we were with those remaining dollars is, as has been noted, we allowed a queue, uh, to, um, to develop, um, after, uh, before we closed the application deadline, so that if we did get additional dollars in either of our direct assistance programs to individuals or to small businesses, that we would be able to allocate those dollars, and we have the infrastructure in place to, basically upon Board direction, be able to cut checks and get that, those dollars out on the street, uh, directly. And, and of course, I should say, as a caveat to all that, we made all of these recommendations in consultation with not only our nonprofit community, but our FQHCs and everyone else that you see represented.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Uh, Commissioner Cummings?
If I may follow up, Mr. Chairman. So, it's my understanding that with many of those nonprofits who, who actually had individuals who weren't served the first to go around because the funding, um, because there was no funding, many of those individuals, or most of those, will not be served with additional funding. Is that correct?
Mr. County Administrator.
I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure I'm clear. Did you say on the nonprofit side?
Yes, I'm sorry, on the nonprofit side.
Right. For the nonprofits, the actual, the nonprofit programs, um, concluded, uh, and were actually undersubscribed. Uh, both of the other, uh, programs that were recommended for this additional funding, they're both oversubscribed. And so, we actually had more money left over at the end of our nonprofit grant program than we, uh, a little bit, a little bit, just a little bit more left over, um, and we closed that program. So, again, this would, with the additions that you see on option one, this would close out the remainder of, of the funding that we anticipate, at least for the first round of CARES, and as you all know, there may be a second round in the works.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Cummings, does that conclude your remarks?
Yes, does provide a clarification. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Uh, next we have Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Proctor, and then I'll wrap it up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Um, Mr. County Administrator, you probably, this is probably in the analysis, but do you know the number of individuals it'll be that are in the queue that are going to be impacted by the 4.4 million off the top of your head?
Let me defer to Alan. I'm sure he's got it right on the tip.
We're anticipating about 1,600 should be able to be funded through the additional amount.
So, 1,600 with the 4.4, and then what about the 6.6?
About 300 businesses.
So, we've got 1,900 entities that are being impacted with that 11 million dollars, and it's a time crunch, right? Like, you have to expend it by December 31st, is that correct?
On the 4.4, but on the 6.6, we have more, more time. Please, go ahead.
The 6 million, we do have more time, but if the Board approved this, we would immediately disperse it to the small businesses.
Okay. Uh, I just want to say, I, I appreciate and understand Commissioner Proctor's position. Um, but I think, you know, you're, you're casting a pretty broad net there with 1,900 individuals or entities being assisted, not, not even including the 4.26 million at the top. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to say thank you guys for, for that. I don't, you know, I understand Commissioner Proctor's sentiment for sure, but I understand we're in a time crunch, and this is money that kind of came down the pipe late, and, um, and certainly hope to get more, and then in the future, would like to have the opportunity to really vet, you know, where we can distribute that money, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Uh, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Vice Chair Proctor, and then I will conclude.
Yeah, briefly, I think we've done a great job of addressing, um, triage-type situations. These are the people that are hurting the most, um, and they need immediate help. Um, so, I appreciate the work that staff has done to not only address the needs, uh, that were remaining, but also these new needs. And we all know that, um, employment and a viable job, and, um, keeping businesses open, um, can, can affect all aspects of our life related to the top list of, uh, subcategories there, mental health, homelessness, um, food insecurity, childcare support, all of that. That kind of goes hand in hand. So, thank you for staff, for preparing, um,
Thank you.
a tourniquet for a very, um, a large wound.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Vice Chair Proctor, and then I'll wrap up.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, I want y'all to note that there's nobody up here that will defend the hard work, um, and integrity of Leon County's staff, um, more intensely than I. Um, there is no greater admirer of our staff, I don't believe, than I. And I think that I bring, um, a yardstick of, um, a little time now to be able to assess and measure, um, their performance over time, and I'm well satisfied in the efforts to administrate, um, something which Commissioner Welch, this is amazing. Uh, Commissioner Cummings, uh, to be a commissioner and sit at the table with $51 million that you didn't tax and get to be a hero to double it out. I mean, we would never get this chance probably again. So, this has been like, you wait all your life for a miracle from heaven to be heroes and sheros, uh, with money. And there's no doubt that we've been able to impact, uh, and to help citizens across this community. And I don't want anybody to think that I'm not pleased with our staff, but I want you to know that when it comes to the establishment of, of spending levels, that I do desire to participate, and I think that the Board of County Commissioners should be allowed and given that chance. I recognize that, um, that time is fleeting, uh, with our need to disperse, in particular, the $4 million that remain. So, I have no problems with how they do it. I would like for the Board to have a voice in what they're doing. Uh, I want to ask the question, uh, Ms. County Administrator, for the persons who are already in queue and have not been funded, will it be, will it be required to reapply, reopen, or will they be grandfathered in? What is the process?
Mr. County Administrator.
They have already applied. They will not be required to reapply.
Okay. And new notices for those who didn't apply on the first, on the last round will be sent forward and all of that?
No, based on our, uh, based on our analysis, we have a number of people in the queue that will exhaust the available funding yet again. So, we let that queue, uh, grow, um, to the extent that we believe that we would receive additional funding. So, there will, will, we don't anticipate a need to reopen applications.
And that includes the 11 million?
That does.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, let's try to wrap this, uh, agenda item up. Commissioner Cummings, and then I will go ahead and conclude remarks. Mr. Cummings.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, uh, we know that we are in dire straits now financially. Uh, many of the individuals in our community are facing evictions, very serious evictions, uh, mortgage foreclosures and the like, even though at some point there was a moratorium on evictions, but I know personally, professionally, there are those pending individuals that have been, uh, evicted. Uh, my question is, I guess, directed to the, uh, County Administrator, how soon, um, if this is approved, how soon would those individuals that are already in the queue, applications have already been approved, will they be, um, given any assistance prior to Christmas?
Mr. Deputy County Administrator.
Uh, yes, we will start processing checks immediately, beginning tomorrow, and anticipating getting everything done by the end of the calendar year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Uh, just to wrap up real quickly, I just wanted to, um, thank the County Administrator and all of his staff that have done a tremendous job, uh, working on this. You know, this is a two-part process. One was to actually get the federal funds. The other was to make sure that, having received, received those funds, um, we have a program that, that, that distributes that to people that are truly in need and maximizes use of those taxpayer dollars. So, thanks to you, County Administrator, it's a tremendous job. And because of that, the good work that you're doing, uh, it helped us get this additional 11 million. So, uh, with that, uh, the motion has been made for options one and two, made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. County Administrator, the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item provides a status report on the current COVID-19 restrictions related to the use of county parks and amenities through the fall months, and seeks the Board's guidance on county tourism-sponsored community and athletic events for FY 2021 as we continue to mitigate the spread of the virus. Uh, Leon County is currently in Phase Two of the Leon County COVID-19 Response Reopening Plan, which allows Commissioners, as you well know, for the passive recreation, um, use of greenways, trails, dog parks, playgrounds, campgrounds, but prohibits the use of community centers, pavilions, and limits the use of recreational fields for organized team sport activities to those licensed youth sports providers, and restricts county sponsorship of visitor, uh, events, uh, and visitor, uh, generating community events, uh, until Phase Three, uh, of our reopening plan. Based on the public health guidance, uh, this item does not recommend any changes to our, our current use of parks or the dispersment of our tourism event grants, uh, funds prior, uh, to, um, uh, rather, I'm sorry, the tourism event grant funds to sponsor upcoming community events. I should note, Commissioners, that many of the public venues that would host large events, um, such as, uh, and parades are controlled by the City of Tallahassee, which, uh, has prohibited these events, uh, at their facilities through December 31st. The city is expected to make a decision about future availability of their facilities in January 21. This item recommends the Board's acceptance of the report, which is option one, and to direct staff to bring this item back on February 9th for the Board to reconsider, uh, based on the latest public health guidance and local conditions relative to our tourism, uh, grant funding program. As always, uh, the Board has the discretion to adjust, um, uh, current reopening policies or practices as it sees fit, and, uh, this item provides additional options for your consideration should the Board wish to expand the use of parks or disperse county tourism sponsorship funds for specific community events. With that, uh, Commissioners, this item, uh, recommends, uh, option, uh, one. Let me just, let me just make sure of that. What is it? One and two. That's right, one and two. I had to, I had to flip between pages here. Uh, and, uh, we have received one written comment on this item, and we have one speaker signed up to speak on this item virtually.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Would you please introduce the, uh, speaker?
Yes, the speaker is Elizabeth Emanuel.
Elizabeth Emanuel. Uh, Ms. Emanuel, uh, thank you for being here. Please, uh, state your name and address to the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Elizabeth Emanuel, CEO of Tallahassee Downtown, 300 South Duval Street, 504. May I begin?
Yes, ma'am. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Firstly, and most importantly, thank you all so much for your leadership and trying times. I know no decision you all have made in 2020 or will make this evening has been easy. These are complicated issues. Thank you to the staff for putting together a comprehensive write-up of this complex agenda issue. I appreciate Ms. Blackburn's data and how serious this situation is. I would also like to thank you all for your support of the Tourist Development Council funding. That funding has been enormously helpful to our organization as we put on free community events aiming at providing a safe and fun environment to bring our community together into its heart, downtown. A downtown that has struggled during the pandemic due to a high rate of vulnerable employers, most employees working from home, civil unrest, football season cancellations, and no large-scale events. Just within our own organization, 86 events that make up 40% of our revenue were reduced to 48. We are very proud to be one of the few public organizations to hold continuous outdoor events during the pandemic. We were able to bring our downtown market back each Saturday since July with very strict guidelines to ensure public safety. This brought much-needed revenue to our vendors who were otherwise left without streams of their income. We were also able to shift our downtown concert series into a sundown drive-in, offering our community the ability to experience fun with a free, family-friendly movie in the Civic Center's parking lot. We are so grateful for the support provided by Visit Tallahassee for these events. We could not have done these events without that support. As an event organizer, the cost of doing events on private property versus public property, which is what we shifted to, is exponentially higher. Instead of seven events, we could only do two. It proves the value of the city and county's support in ensuring events for our community can happen safely, but in order for them to continue, this grant funding is absolutely imperative. The most important key to this is creating a case-by-case plan for safety. In 2020, our organization has created evolving safety plans. We stayed plugged into TDC recommendations and continued to pivot to ensure we're providing the safest environment possible. This saves additional time, manpower, and funding. It means smaller events with less vendors and less attendees. I have great faith that organizations who plan to hold outdoor events in the spring, like Word of South and Lemoine's Chain of Parks Art, will provide COVID-safe plans that ensure the people they are bringing into our downtown will be done safely. They are already planning for COVID-safe procedures. As Commissioner, as Commissioner Welch pointed out, mental health is suffering. We are becoming a community divided without much proverbially bring us together. More than ever, we need unity. 2020 has worn us all down. We need free community events that remind our community how much they love living in Tallahassee, the chance to celebrate Leon County and support our local businesses and provide revenue for our citizens. If private entities have gun shows at the fairgrounds, we can and should have art shows in our beautiful parks. Deferring this decision to February puts event organizers in a tough space. There are seven events who depend on this funding scheduled to take place just in February.
Ms. Emanuel, I'm sorry, your time is up.
... time to create COVID-safe events.
Thank you, Ms. Emanuel. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Uh,
Thank you all.
Commissioner, is that, uh, the?
That concludes our speakers. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Um, first to speak on this item is Commissioner Cummings and Commissioner Maddox. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cummings, uh, Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm simple on this. I just want to go ahead and move staff recommendations. Uh, staff recommendation of option number one and two, speaking as a member of the Sports Council, um, the grant funding that we give out every year is very important to the events that we give it out to, but I think those, uh, events, as well as the Board, uh, of the Sports Council, understand also, uh, the, the pandemic being here and the place that we're in, and the considerations that we have to take, take, uh, take into place. And so, um, the option to actually just go ahead and revisit this in a few months to see how things are, would, would be what that Sports Council, I think, the rest of the TDC would prefer. So, that's why I made the option, uh, motion for options one and two.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Is there a second?
Second, my dear.
Seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Next, I have Commissioner Dozier to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I gotta say that yesterday during briefing, I was where you are, Commissioner Maddox, and I, I may be able to support the motion. I think bringing an item back in February is appropriate. But on reflection, I, and hearing, uh, Ms. Emanuel's comments, um, she really pointed to this, that the planning time to look at some of these events and how critical the funding from TDC is, and I'm talking about events later in the spring, March, April, May, that not having a decision until February may be a hardship for them. Ms. County Administrator, am I correct in noting, um, in the item that applications were received for the TDC grants? I'm sure there was some caveat there, you know, depending on what the county decides in the phase in reopening. But in those applications, organizations were required to provide a COVID plan, and there was some indication about, um, canceling an event within 75 days or something like that. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, any large event, I think there, let me back up for a second, Mr. Chair. There, I think there is a difficult double standard that we have faced in the past. We make decisions for government facilities, for parks, for youth sports, for other things like that, but we see private entities renting their facilities for gatherings and other things like that. The universities are having The universities are having, you know, football games, things like that. So, people question why we can do one and not the other. And I, and I do understand those concerns. I think as we have always done, we, we're making the best decisions based on public health guidance that we can. So, for that reason, I could lean towards February. I'm wondering if there's a way, Mr. County Administrator, to move forward, but really be cautious and say this is going to be a month-by-month decision, that if someone has a hybrid event or limits the number of attendees, of course, has that COVID plan in their application, that they could be in queue to receive funding, but they are subject to restrictions by TDC, by the county, if we have not improved our numbers, if our community is not improved by the spring. Is there any, has there been any discussion about that? I think I'm clear enough here, but do you have any thoughts on that?
Mr. County Administrator.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Let me, let me first clarify, and I know you know this, Commissioner, just for the general public, that it's not a matter of whether the events can occur or not, it's just the county sponsorship of the events. So, the events may very well occur without the county sponsorship of an event. However, we, the reason that we gave you the option and recommended the option of February was just for that purpose, to be able to come back and look at what the local conditions are at the time relative to the health conditions in the community, rather than simply at this point in time to say that for the, throughout the fiscal year, that none of the events would be, would be funded. Obviously, that, that direction would provide that there would be no county sponsorship of events in December, in January, and part of February. But that was the best way that we could frankly decide upon the right timeline, but we did also want to provide opportunities for the board to, again, Commissioner, if you, if you wanted to look at certain events that, again, looked more, you know, on the scale of harm, if you will, if you wanted to look at some that were more amenable to mitigation and that sort of thing, indoor events versus outdoor events and that sort of thing, we wanted to provide you a list of those options as well in case you did want to provide us any additional direction like that. But we did not contemplate us making those decisions on individual events.
Could we bring that decision forward a few weeks to the January 26 meeting instead of the February 9th meeting?
Mr. County Administrator.
Certainly, if that's the board's direction, we could.
Thank you. Again, I am concerned about planning for spring events, that some of these organizations, if things improve or if they have a good plan for an outdoor event, social distancing, something like that, they need some assurance as to whether or not they're going to receive TDC funds. So, I think I could get there, Commissioner Maddox. I'm wondering if you would mind amending the motion to have that report come back to us on January 26 instead of February 9. It's not, is that fine? Okay. I know that may still present a lot of challenges.
Excuse me, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Jackson, would you approve of that as the second to the original motion?
January 26 instead of February.
Yeah, just two weeks earlier.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's not much, but we don't have another commission meeting, and it will get us through the holidays so we can kind of see where our numbers are at that point and make a decision, yeah.
If, I'm sorry. If we take it up on the 26th and we don't see good numbers to move forward, would that be the last opportunity though for us to, or do we bring it back again, let's say, late February as a last attempt to see, and then after that point, if we're still not good, we just let it go? I just, I want to give as much time as possible, but I understand what you're saying, because there are some events that we take it up in February, they'll, they'll still have opportunity to go on, so.
Commissioner Dozier.
There are, there are events in February that this is going to directly impact. I mean, we, we just have to own that right now. And for my part, I'm not sure we're going to see much difference between now and January. So, that, that feels a little different to me than projecting forward to those events and the planning that has to happen for March, April, May. Unless, it might be wishful thinking, but I'm hoping that our community is doing a great job and we're getting, you know, vaccines and everything, and we're in a better place by that time. So, of course, I would be open to coming back and talking about it again. Another issue that the county administrator and I talked about yesterday during briefing is to give organizations a chance to discuss those COVID plans, to talk about whether or not they, you know, what the status of their event is, and to provide additional information to the TDC, Visit Tallahassee, by now January 26, and provide us with some of that information. I mean, there may be some events that work better than others. So, we could beef up that report a little bit and make a more nuanced decision, but for now, I'm content with just two extra weeks. Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Dozier, does that conclude your remarks? Thank you. Next, we have Vice Chair Proctor.
Chairman, thank you. As I was listening to Commissioner Dozier, Commissioners, I was a little slow getting here this afternoon, and I was fascinated by the speech given by President-elect Joe Biden. And today, he announced a two o'clock meeting, the new HHS Secretary, the CDC Director, the National Health Equity Director, as well as the Surgeon General. And from the tone of the President and these new heads of additional healthcare organizations, it appears that the President said that as a patriotic act, he was asking Americans to wear a mask for his first 200 days. And I think that on January 26, legal counsel, I want to ask that a new dynamic is going to be interjected if the posture and tone of what I heard today is accurate. This President is going to be asking for shutdown restrictions. And I think that we've got to, whereas before, we had no national voice of leadership telling us anything, how bound are we to the voice of the new President who is saying, "I want control, and these are my steps for doing it, and will America, as an act of patriotism, follow me?" So, does the federal edict of a President supersede a county board of county commissioners, or is his just a sweeping appeal for our sanity to meet his? Because I think that by the 26th, it looks like President Biden-elect is going to be moving very swiftly with new canons for us to abide by. So, I mean, you don't have to answer today, but I'm pondering, our governor was not interested in closure. Our previous President was not interested in closure. But everything I heard from the new Secretary, CDC, Surgeon General, and the President-elect, it looks like we about to get a big umbrella asking for national policies, and we have not had to interject or integrate national directives into anything. So, it may be a little premature based on what I heard and had to stay there and watch this afternoon. What are your thoughts about the national ask of these federal officials who are all going to be assuming the hem of federal health policy with respect to little state like ours that every man, every little county got to stand up for themselves? How do you see that?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair Proctor, you bring up a good point and interesting point. To the extent there becomes more of a cohesive directive at the federal level, it will be interesting to see and will ultimately potentially dictate what the county can and cannot do depending on the form of whatever that takes, whether that's guidance, which is what the CDC generally does, whether that is the form of some regulatory requirement that's imposed, or some authority or power that the President exercises in a time of emergency, which we have yet to see occur as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So, I'm fortunately at the benefit of having viewed what you did today, but yes, to your point, it's possible that at the federal level, action may be required or recommended that would otherwise inform what this body decided to do in January.
And finally, I think that funding of that new $900 billion and subsequent dollars, our conformance with this federal ask may have something to do with whether or not we qualify for additional monies. And if we're not going to adhere to those standards, then we may make ourselves ineligible to receive new monies, you know. It's worth our looking. This is a new dynamic, for sure.
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it would be interesting to see if they tie future COVID-related relief funding to compliance with certain mitigation measures or other requirements that, again, we have not seen to date, but that certainly could be coming.
Correct. Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair, does that conclude your comments? Great, thank you very much. Okay, wrapping up, the motion on the floor is option one and two, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. Family amendment offered by Commissioner Dozier, which was accepted by Commissioners Maddox and Jackson to make the next assessment come to us on January 26 for that or the county commission meeting. Yes, Commissioner Dozier.
Quick comment, Mr. Chair. At the January 26 meeting, in that agenda item, Mr. County Administrator, I would love to hear from our Visit Tallahassee staff and from your perspective as well, of course, if we have any options to provide these grants, even if organizations don't host in-person events, if they have a hybrid event, a lot of these grants are based on numbers of attendance, but I think this is one of those times where a grant for a hybrid event, even if it's smaller in the spring, may help some of these organizations survive so that they can have a robust event in 2022. So, just any other options or brainstorming on that? Can we include that in the agenda item? Is that a problem? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Mr. Vice Chair, please be brief. Please be brief.
In that spirit, in that particular spirit, this is an excellent point. I've been thinking about this right here. You just hit it. Commissioner Dozier just hit a home run, and I think if we listen and rewind up real and go back, a lot of organizations may not last until next year if the funding that carries them from year to year. So, it's not so much the actual fulfillment of an activity, it's the actual need of the fiscal support, period. Not so much the activity. I think that if we think in that mold, in that model, what Commissioner Dozier has just shared with us, how wrong would we be to, as a humanitarian gesture, and in recognizing this act, whatever you call it, an act of God, but the pandemic is nothing that nobody, it was not self-induced? How can we think, county attorney, to allocate monies that we have already projected to give and not make it contingent on the actual occurrence of these events? And I just give one example, one example. For years and years now, Congressman Al Lawson has had the Christmas tournament, kids from all around, you know, come play basketball Christmas. And this year, we have supported, and he's been told that we can't support him. Well, he's still going to have the tournament, and it seems like we are punishing through no effort of their own, and there are other entities that may not be able to perform, but we still ought to give them this money, in particular where there's a hardship when we don't. So, I think that Commissioner Dozier is appealing to our hearts and really tugging on our heartstrings to see this through a different prism, a different lens, and I would like for us to rethink that along those humanitarian bases. That's my interest, and if this board is interested, I'd like to, what would I need to do now? I mean, I think that we've been too hard and too based on some that it's not the people's fault, and they need the money.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Here's the motion on the table that's been made and seconded. Commissioner Maddox, do you have a very brief comment to make?
Very brief.
Okay.
Madam County Attorney, you can shake your head yes or no, I believe, because this money is TDC money, is very prescriptive on how we can spend it, although I do think you have some good, some good points, and you too, Commissioner Dozier. If those events don't happen, we can't give the money out unfortunately unless we have to state for an exception, because there's certain rules around how we can give those money.
Can we get an exception? How do we get an exception?
Mr. County Attorney.
We would be happy to include this when the item comes back. The real policy issue for the board would be, for those events that the organizers intend to have, do you want to continue to provide funding for those events and/or organizations to invite people to the community under the current conditions? That's the real policy issue that remains before the board.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Mr. Chair, just wrapping this up.
Well, I've got a note to speak in front of you. Let's please be very brief. We, we have our public hearing in 35 minutes. If we give ourselves a five-minute break, that means we've got to get, we'd like to get through all these agenda items before the public hearing. So, Commissioner Cummings, please, and then Commissioner Dozier, please be quick.
Commissioner Proctor raised a great issue, and it's got me thinking too, but of course, my primary, well, my secondary concern is about the county, and I wouldn't want the county to be perceived as advocating or supporting events that are contrary to the advice, the medical advice that's being provided by local health officials or the CDC. So, I'm not sure how we can, we can address that or streamline that, but I certainly think it is a concern with, with certain entities that depend on the allocation or grants from the county year after year and might find themselves in a dire, more of a dire strait right now because of the strain that we are all experiencing because of the pandemic.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, all I was going to say was, I think there is a lot of nuance in how we can allocate those dollars and what choices we may have. So, I think that's the report we need on the 26th to look at those questions you've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I really think this is a good line of discussion.
I just want to just fundamentally.
Very quick, Mr. Vice Chair.
We, we're going to give out $60 million to this community and for people to continue to do the activities that they do, but for the, for the activities that we have scheduled, we saying, we ain't giving out hours, but we still giving out millions of dollars. We just wrote it on $11 million, $15 million to spend. I, I can't reconcile that we're giving out money in these big categories, but for the little activities that we're talking about, we can't give that, because it's a conflict to our policy that people will calm down and stay home. I think that we need an exception created. I'm asking county attorney if you could please sketch something out. I'll help you. If you come up with a skeleton, we're working exception, because what we're doing with $15 million certainly supersedes the little bit of money we're talking about here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. County Administrator, do you think you can incorporate some of this discussion into the next agenda item on January 26?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. All in favor of the motion for option one and two? In favor, say aye. Aye? All's in favor, say nay? Okay, the motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. County Administrator, the next item, 26.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as directed at the previous meeting, this item provides an analysis of three separate issues related to the board's policy regarding rules and procedure for your meeting, for your meetings. In summary, commissioners, these three consider allowing citizens to provide comments aboard workshops, limiting commissioner discussion on individual agenda items, and the scheduling of workshop to review the county's existing rules of procedure policy. I'll provide a brief overview of each and then ask, or and then seek any direction the board may wish to provide. First, as outlined in the item, it's not a common practice among counties to accept public comments during workshops, as these meetings are intended to provide the board with an opportunity to receive presentations and have detailed roundtable discussions without the expectations of taking any official action. Should the board wish of taking any official action. Should the board wish to allot time for citizen input at all these workshops, staff will prepare a revised policy for board consideration at your January meeting. However, it should be noted that the CDC currently recommends limiting the number of and duration of indoor meetings in order to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, and this change would extend the length of board workshops. Mr. Chairman, pardon the interruption.
I thought you all were just going to let me finish that one.
No.
Come back to it, but that's okay. I'll go in the actual order of the agenda, if you like.
All right.
All right, Commissioner, sorry, Agenda Item Number 26. This item seeks the board's approval to award a bid to Leon County Detention Facility's Lobby. It's a lobby hardening project. This item was budgeted, and there's adequate funding available in the capital project budget. We have no speakers on this item, and we're recommending Option One. We're happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner Dozier.
Move Option One.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier for Option One. Any discussion? Mr. Vice Chair, Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the analysis of the item. This item is to modify the lobby of our jail. I chair and have chaired for a few years now and hope that I may continue to do so, the Public Safety Corning Council. And in the MBE category, the award, I believe, goes to, is that Sheffield? Ms. County, Ms. Ray?
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Proctor. Could you restate that question?
Is the spelling of Sheffield, S-H-E and S-H-A, which one is it?
Mr. County Administrator.
Sorry, let me just get back to that item.
The option has S-H-A-F-F, and the analysis has S-H-E-F-F. I don't want to misstate anything about.
Can you get that for me, Alan?
It's S-H-A, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So here we have a jail that has 70% black inmates, week after week, and our MBE has only, Sheffield has only met 6% of the 14% MBE goal assigned to this project. As you look at everything from drywall to plumbing to electric, whatever, all you got to do, this is just disconcerting that the facility that has the strongest participation of minorities in the community, Leon County Jail, gets a contractor who can't, who can't find or who won't abide by the aspirational goal. The reason I'm voting against this award is I can't reconcile the jail with 70% African-Americans, but the contractor fixing on the building can only find 6% participation for MBE. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Seeing as no other speakers, the motion is Option One, made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All's in favor, say aye. Aye? All's opposed?
Aye.
So the motion carries 6-1 with Commissioner Proctor dissent. Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item seeks board approval for replacement of necessary insurance coverages for 2021. While the overall, while there is an overall increase in our costs, they do still fall within our budgeted amounts for this purpose. We have no speakers on this item, and we're recommending Option One.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Vice Chair Proctor?
No comment.
All right. Commissioner Dozier? Oh, move the item? All right, motion made by Commissioner Dozier for Option One and seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All's in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, next item, number 28.
Okay, back to Agenda Item Number 28. Commissioners, again, this item comes to you at your previous direction. In summary, there are three issues before you related to allowing citizens to speak at workshop, limiting commissioner discussion on individual items, as well as scheduling a workshop on the county's existing rules for meeting policy. I'll provide a brief overview on each one and seek direction, any direction that you may have on any of these issues. First, as outlined in the item, Commissioners, it's there's not, it is not a common practice among counties to accept public comments during workshops, as these meetings are intended to provide the board with a rare opportunity, if you will, to receive presentations and have detailed roundtable discussions among yourself without the expectation of taking any official action. Should the board wish to allot time for citizen input at all workshops, staff would be prepared to, or we would prepare a revised policy for your consideration at your January meeting. However, it should be noted, again, that the CDC currently recommends limiting the number and duration of indoor meetings in order to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, and this change, of course, would extend the length of your board workshops. In light of this, the board may also wish to consider this item after the COVID-19 pandemic. The second issue before you, Commissioners, considers limiting commissioner debate on agenda items to three minutes per commissioner during the pandemic, although it has not been previously, it's not previously been the board's practice to limit commissioner debate. Time limits is allowable, and it's contemplated in parliamentary procedures. Robert's Rules of Order already provides limitations for debatable motions with the option to extend or shorten time limits as may be necessary by a simple majority of the board. However, should the board wish to temporarily, temporarily limit individual commissioner debate during the pandemic, the county attorney could include a provision in the weekly proclamation declaring a continuing local state of emergency. The last issue before you, Commissioners, on this is scheduling a workshop for board rules of procedure, included in your materials is an overview of the board's current rules of procedure. Should the board wish to schedule a workshop or receive further analysis, May 25th is the earliest date that the board has designated for scheduling workshops for these purposes. Alternatively, to reduce the amount of time the board is convening in chambers during the pandemic, the board may wish to request that further analysis be presented as an agenda item at a regularly scheduled meeting. However, Commissioners, as always, we will receive any direction that you have. With that, we're happy to answer any questions you might have, and we're seeking board direction on this item.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Commissioner Maddox is first, and then Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for bringing this item forward. You guys know I was the one who brought this up. I'm going to go ahead and go with Option Number Four. I did have a couple of thoughts there on maybe even adding just a second, making it two, three-minute speeches, just like in Robert's Rules, but right now, I'm going to settle what, just Option Number Four on the item. That's my motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded for Option Four. Next, we have Commissioner Dozier and then Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's a lot packed into this item. I understand why I wanted to consolidate this, and I'm going to bring in one other item that was on consent, which is the social media policies. And we've approved our county attorney looking at those policies, and we had a good discussion about that during our briefing. So I think we're wrapping our arms around a lot of different issues. As we talked about the last meeting, this is why I made a motion, and I'm glad for your support, to hold the workshop on our rules and procedures. A lot of them have been on the books for a while. Just last year, we had an issue of how much of Robert's Rules of Orders give us order and how much doesn't, I will put it that way. We have our own path. We rely on Robert's Rules for some things, but we do have our own procedures. Is that fair to say, Madam County Attorney?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's correct.
Okay. So I am fully open to talking about the three-minute time limit, and I think, Commissioner Maddox, you framed this as a concern during COVID. I want to compliment our chairman today for moving the conversation along. Some things do take more discussion than other things. So I am content relying on our chair to have a heavier hand this year, perhaps, than most of the time. And as someone who asks a lot of questions, I'll commit to trying to rein that in as well. I do think it's important to have that workshop. I had hoped to have it earlier in the year, but because we changed our schedule and have workshops on the second Tuesday of the month, or fourth, third Tuesday, whatever it might be, I think the first day is in May, although County Administrator said, you said we could have it before a commission meeting if we wanted to. So that speaks to COVID issues as well. We don't want to have too many meetings. So where I am, I'm not comfortable with the board policy, like three-minute rule in an emergency declaration. It just, that seems like a bit of a stretch to me. I'd rather rely on our chair to keep us reined in, move that workshop forward if we'd like to have it before a commission meeting. We could even have it early in the day, so there's a gap between that and our regular commission meeting if we want to talk about these issues soon, or keep the meeting for May 25th and move forward with that workshop, because I think a workshop format does give us more time to discuss that. The social media policy, I think that should be part of our discussion as well, if that's possible, Madam County Attorney, just talking about all of those issues that we deal with in our policies. So we've already got a motion on the table. Mr. Chair, I actually would like to hear comments from others. So I want to get back in queue to do a substitute motion after we go through comments, but I probably will make a substitute motion for the workshop, and based on those comments, we can move it to January if needed or February.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Next, we have Commissioner Jackson, then Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Promise I'm going to try to be brief here. Just a quick rundown on numbers. We moved from 4.94 to 5.21 in a matter of seven days. So we're back above the 5% threshold. When we first gathered the meeting today, we had 30 people in here. If you use that same percentage positivity rate, that means one and a half people in here were positive for COVID. We have now been at it for two hours and 45 minutes, separated by less than 24 inches. I couldn't ask for two better people to be sitting next to, by the way. But separated by 24 inches. And we have this great plexiglass, and it is proven to stop some large particles. We're sitting in an enclosed room. We are walking a very tight rope. Professional football leagues, basketball leagues, baseball leagues are canceling indoor activities and fan attendance. The Rose Bowl isn't going to allow anyone into the stadium, the longest continuously running NCAA football bowl game. I feel like with the uptick in the numbers, we reached two tremendous milestones this last week, 15,000 positive cases in Leon County, 150 deaths. Each one of those 150 deaths are attached to 150 families that have the very real burden of possibly not have even been able to tell their loved ones goodbye as they laid in a ICU unit. In Nevada, they have converted a parking garage into a makeshift hospital ward to create more ICU units. I'm not trying to be a naysayer or a Chicken Little, the sky is falling, but I'm going to speak selfishly for just a moment. For the 30-year-old daughter who's undergoing chemotherapy treatment who is immunocompromised, I can't afford to be sick. I'm on day 156 of complications from pneumonia in my lungs from COVID in July. I have an 84-year-old mother, I know we all have these stories, but I think it's important that we make it relatable. 84-year-old mother in assisted living care who has not been able to see me in person since March 13th of 2020. I have a 55-year-old disabled brother who is still suffering complications from COVID in July. We have got to be more alert and serve as role models for our community. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Next, we have Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Cummings, and then Commissioner Dozier to wrap it up.
All right. Real quick, Madam County Attorney, the reason I wanted to put this in the declarations is because it is about COVID. Does putting it in the emergency declaration prevent us from the establishment of the rule that if a commissioner wants an extension, that can be asked for, seconded, and voted on, or if we wanted to extend a debate on a certain item, does that prevent us from doing that?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Maddox, if it's the direction of the board, sufficient flexibility could be included in the proclamations that would contemplate exactly what you're talking about, extensions at the discretion of the chair and that sort of thing. So that could be accommodated.
Okay. So, but then we need to be a part of my motion in order for it to be accommodated, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So I'm going to amend my own motion, just to put a little more detail to it, Mr. Chair. The motion right now is Option Four. The vision I have here is that we would have three minutes per commissioner. That commissioner could ask for extension of their time to speak with a, to make a motion for extension for the time to speak needs a second. The majority of the board would have to vote in favor in order for that time to be given, is what I'm thinking there, Mr. Chair. And it would go in the emergency declaration so that when we are through this phase and there is no more emergency declaration, we will be able to go back to our normal operations as far as speaking and all that kind of stuff. And if, if we want to move in a direction of entertaining those types of things, then I'd be willing to do a workshop after that point. But right now, I don't think there's anything broken with the way we do things, but we are in the middle of pandemic. And so I'm trying to be, as Commissioner Jackson said, a good, be a good example to our citizens and show them that we're trying to do all we can to mitigate for ourselves. And so the motion right now stands would be Option Four, with the caveat that if a commissioner would like more time speaking, that that commissioner could, at that time, ask for additional minutes. That would be seconded by a commission and voted on. And then if approved, they would get that time. It would be in the emergency declaration so that after, there's no more emergency declaration, then that cause goes away, we go back to regular operations. Okay? That would be the motion that I had. I had another comment, but I just want to make sure that's okay with the second of the motion.
Commissioner Jackson, would you accept that friendly-
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand it, Commissioner Maddox. So in the moment, they would request time, additional time?
Right. So if they're at the end of their three minutes, they would say, hey, Commissioners, I would like to make a motion that I'd be granted two more minutes or three more minutes. Somebody seconds it, it goes on. Right now, as it sits, we have 21 minutes per item if we're able to get through it, right? So let's say I want to speak a little more. I just say, hey, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that I receive two more minutes to finish my point. Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Proctor seconds it. Chair asks, is there any objection? If there's objection, then it goes to a vote, and majority vote, we move forward. That's simple.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. On point question for the county attorney, the devil's in the details. Could Commissioner Maddox specify whether or not that motion is debatable? What I'm concerned about is having a queue of speakers debating whether or not to extend time for a speaker that's going over three minutes. Could we specify in the motion that this motion is not debatable?
Mr. Chairman, the board can dictate what it wants its policy to be, so we could put-
Perfect point, Mr. Chair. And I would like to add that that motion is not debatable. It would go straight to a vote, just like a call to the question.
Commissioner Jackson, would you second that? Would you approve of that change to the original motion?
Yeah, that's, that keeps us from continuing to go down rabbit holes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Jackson. Next to speak is Commissioner Cummings and then Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I just believe that extraordinary times require extraordinary measures. And having said that, I certainly support Commissioner Maddox's motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Dozier, to wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am struggling right now. We have, you know, just to have a little fun with this, we've been at this discussion so far about 10 minutes. So Commissioner Jackson, you, there's, it's just hard to even wrap my arms around what you and your family have been through, and so many families have been through since the summer. And I really understand the motivation here in modeling the behavior, and yet, we only have to be in chambers once or twice a month in this chamber. We have a few other meetings. Spending time debating how much time we're going to talk about things when we can have the chair rein us in and some issues just take longer seems like- the chair rein us in and some issues just take longer seems like an attempt to control the situation when a lot of things are out of our control. If we could be in virtual meetings right now, which I think we did as well as we could for months, to protect your family, my family, others, to protect the public, I think that would be great. We've taken steps for virtual comments, we've done a lot of different things to help. But we have employees that are on the job every day. We have businesses and people throughout the community that have to be on the job every day, and the decisions we make and the opportunity they have to discuss these issues with us, presented to us, keep business moving, is critical. And we've already limited the number of workshops, limited the number of meetings. I'm struggling right now, and sorry to put this too bluntly, if I'm going to put this too bluntly, but some of us come in with more questions than others. And it's hard not to see this suggestion as wanting to limit the discussion of the board. And I think it's going to present a challenge for us in the future. I know that's not the intent, but it's hard to see how this is going to help if we have a robust agenda and we shave off 10 minutes, or 15 minutes, or something like that, because I really don't think it's going to have that much more of an impact. So I can't support the motion on the table. Now, I do believe, even if we approve a workshop at this point, we can change that schedule anytime up to maybe a month or a few weeks before the workshop. Is that correct, Ms. County Administrator?
Ms. County Administrator.
Correct.
So I can separate this into a different motion. I was going to make a subs, actually, I was just going to make a substitute motion for option five, to have the workshop scheduled on May 25th to discuss our rules and procedures. This is just an opportunity to look at those. County Attorney has said, you know, it has looked at a lot of different elements, and we need to move forward with that workshop. We can postpone if needed, if it's a problem at that time. None of us have talked about the work, the citizen input at workshops. I'm content leaving things the way it is right now, but my substitute motion is for option five, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Is there a second for the substitute motion? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next speaker. Commissioner Cummings, then Commissioner Welch.
Mr. Chairman, I have already spoken, so...
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Welch.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In the spirit of brevity, just as before, I agree with the spirit of Commissioner Maddox's agenda item. I just don't like the formality of it. So I just, I would just encourage everybody to be disciplined and be brief in the context of what we're dealing with. I'm totally sympathetic to what everybody's dealing with. Commissioner Jackson, I'm in school every day with students, dealing with this. Let's just try to be brief. I just don't like the formality of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Let me go ahead and see a couple of remarks. I literally have gone back and forth on this item as you all talked and provided feedback and comments. I started out against it, then I was for it, now, you know, it's, and we're all trying to do the same thing. We're trying to balance the need for public discussion of very important issues, as well as customer, customer, client, public feedback, with health and safety concerns. Those are two very important things we need to uphold and do both well. Again, I struggle with this. I'm going to vote against it mainly because of what Commissioner Welch has said, along the lines of what Commissioner Welch has said. I think that in my role as chair, I can do a pretty good job of trying to keep things moving. I've been trying to do my best for this meeting here, and I think that's probably the best that we can do. What I can do with the general consent, I don't need to make a motion, is I can be harder if we need to be, if it feels like things are trailing off with someone speaking but not a lot of necessary new content. Just be very blunt. So if you, so I will not support this motion. I have gone back and forth on it, but I do think it's a little too formal for this body. It doesn't meet very often, but when we do meet, we need to have some flow and collegiality. With that in mind, all those in favor of the motion as stated, which is option four, but added to that, a vote to extend that is made by the person speaking, seconded, and then voted as not debatable motion by the majority of the board to extend that time. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. That is Commissioner Proctor, Jackson, and Commissioner Cummings. All those in favor, say nay. Nay. That is Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Dozier, and myself. I missed, wait, I missed...
Passes four through.
Okay, okay, great. Sorry about that. Did I miss somebody in terms of the yes votes? Okay.
Commissioner Maddox.
I've got like four different things going on in my head at the same time. It's kind of hard with run the meetings, but, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Dozier, please be brief.
So I, option five to schedule that workshop, this was a unanimous vote at the last meeting to schedule a workshop on our rules and procedures and other issues. As I've said, County Attorney and I have talked about this, and County Administrator, and there are things that we could look at, and we could always move that forward. I'm wondering if I didn't get a second because it was in the form of a substitute. So just because I like being in my head against plexiglass, I'm going to make a motion for option five standalone to schedule that workshop, and we can postpone if needed, just to look at our own rules and procedures. That's for last...
I will second that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion? Vice Chair Proctor?
Chairman, I was hopeful as a, as a, that we're compromised, that we could spend, you know, a small amount of time at our commission retreat if we're having one. And as opposed to a full-blown workshop on this matter, I would like to suggest to you and Commissioner Dozier, I would be willing to accommodate 20 minutes or so at our retreat. And I think that us having heard the discussion for a while now, that we ought to be able to resolve it within 30 minutes at our retreat, and I think we should designate that versus a full-blown workshop. I would offer that as my thought to a compromise.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, I asked for a workshop for a reason. There is a host of issues on our rule, on our procedures, on everything else that we have brought up this year, and we have two new colleagues. I think it would be beneficial for us. I would be doing this COVID or not. I think it's good for a workshop. 20 minutes at a retreat doesn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Just a reminder, we do have three minutes before six o'clock, which we must start at six o'clock. We can suspend our activity now and come back to this agenda item, or we can try to finish the agenda item in the next three minutes and not have a break. Okay. Let's go ahead and continue on. Vice Chair Proctor? Oh. Commissioner Maddox, are you still on the queue?
Yes. On point, if this passes, does it have to pass unanimously, first of all?
I'm so sorry.
Does it have to pass unanimously?
No.
Okay. I'll make a substitute motion that we add this as a retreat discussion item to talk about our rules and procedures.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, but Commissioner Dozier was the originator of the motion, and I seconded it, so she would have to accept it as a part of her motion. Oh, substitute motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll second the substitute motion.
Okay. Substitute motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to, I mean, I know we're at six here, but this is, we have other subjects for the retreat. We approved that agenda already, and I don't think we should be changing that agenda. But more to the point, we needed to give the county attorney's office time to work through this. And so I'm not, I don't want to, there's no point in rushing this to a retreat to have a very short conversation. We can take it back up in the new year if it fails, but I'm just not sure that's worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. So the substitute motion on the table is to move the workshop on board policies and procedures for meetings to the board retreat. All those in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
That is for Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Maddox, and Commissioner Vice Chair Proctor. All those opposed, say nay. Nay. Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Dozier, and myself. So the motion, substitute motion passes. That concludes this agenda item, and we have one minute until six o'clock. Yes, it is. So at six o'clock, six o'clock. So this public meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM sharp on December 8th, 2020. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the first item?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Commissioners, this is your first and only public hearing on a proposed ordinance amending the official zoning map to add the Lake Hall Schoolhouse to the local registry of historic places and to change the zoning classification from RP to RP zoning district with a historical preservation overlay. We have received one written comment on this item, Commissioners, and we have three people who have registered to speak on this item virtually.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Would you please introduce the first speaker?
Actually, okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted, I just got a clarification that would bring us to our speakers who have joined us on Zoom. Geraldine Say.
All right, Mrs. Say, you have three minutes, please. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, 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 I'm here. Okay.
We can hear you, ma'am.
Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jerry See, 2014, truly meaning Tallahassee. First, let me just say one thing, please. I wanted to make sure I acknowledged that I appreciate the work that you guys have done with this COVID and nonprofits, and I appreciate the attitude that you had of wanting to help people, and you didn't make it so difficult for folks to be helped. I appreciate that. The Lake Hall School, we've been working on that for quite a while, and I sure appreciate everyone's support over the month and suggestions and ideas. I support, appreciate the staff support. They were really very helpful and always very accommodating and trying to make sure that everybody's ideas were included. I thought they came up with a very good synopsis of what we've been through over the past year, and I think that this is an opportunity for the community to have an asset that will derive a good bit of attention from other parts of the country and will have, give opportunities for students and other aficionados of African-American history and opportunity to make contributions. So I'm hoping that the Commissioners will be able to support this wholeheartedly as we move into the second phase of, after having had it protected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. See, very much. I appreciate it. Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the next speaker?
The next speaker is Max Epstein, to be followed by LeAnn Boone.
Mr. Epstein, sir, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Court. I'll be brief. Everything Jerry said, I know the board here has put some work into this as well. I would personally like to see a more proactive approach to preserving our important natural resources and our historic resources, especially our African-American history, which is disappearing in front of our eyes. Just in the last five years, we've lost so many landmarks, downtown Frenchtown, and really just a lot of African-American neighborhoods in general. So I'd like to see a more proactive approach to this, and there are also many grants, federal dollars, to help people with historic homes. That means some of these places that may be depressed in other areas can get free federal dollars and help them build equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker.
The final speaker, LeAnn Boone.
Ms. Boone, thank you for being here. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is LeAnn Boone, 300 South Duvall, and I would just like to thank you all for protecting the history of a vulnerable community by passing this ordinance. It is critical for us to remember our past in order for us to understand our present. I'd like to greatly thank Dr. Jerry See for her tireless efforts to preserve the history of this and other communities. Today is truly a victory for historic preservation, and I thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. And Dr. See, I apologize, I addressed you as Ms. See earlier. I'm sorry about that. Seeing as no other speakers in the queue, we'll move on to Commissioners. Anyone like to make a motion on this item? Commissioner Welch?
I still move, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Staff recommendation for option one has been made by Commissioner Cummings, and then is it seconded by Commissioner Welch? Is that right? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion carries unanimously with Vice Chair Proctor out of chambers. Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 32, request the board to conduct the first and only public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from the office residential to zoning district to the general commercial zoning district on approximately 2.39 acres of a 3.07 acre parcel located in the northwest corner of Talpico Road, North Monroe Street. The rezoning of the property will facilitate the redevelopment or expansion of a gas station that's currently located on the existing C2 portion of the property. We have no speakers on this item. We recommend option number one.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Are there any Commissioners in the queue? Any motions? Commissioner Dozier moves for option one, seconded by, is that Commissioner Maddox?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, option one, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. The motion carries with Vice Chair Proctor out of chambers. Next item, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this item, item number 33, before you request the board to conduct the second and final public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance repealing or replacing the floodplain management section and amending the flood-related definitions in the general definition section of the LDC. These revisions are a migration to the state model ordinance, which you've seen before. Again, as this is your second public hearing, we have no speakers on this item, but it is related to the next item on 34, where we do have one speaker. And with that, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we recommend option one.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Let me go ahead and say a comment real quick, because I might be able to save us some time, perhaps, on this, as well as item 34. First of all, I want to thank staff for their extensive work on this agenda item and on item number 34. I know that for the past three months, they've worked very closely with local architects, structural engineers, builders, as well as citizens on the Water Resources Committee, Science Advisory Committee, and DSEM's Advisory Committee for Quality Growth. This item and number 34 are very comprehensive. I started reviewing them last week, but yesterday afternoon, I was having a conversation with some constituents, and I came up with a few more questions that I think are worthy of another look before we make this part of Leon County's Code of Laws. So my suggestion, as you know, I can't make the motions myself, but my suggestions would be to table item 33 and 34 to our January 26 meeting. If you have had those similar conversations with people in the community as I have, there are some things that I think are valid questions that probably need a little bit more work between now and January 26th that could be very beneficial before we actually put this into the Code of Laws. But with that, I will recognize, Commissioner Jackson, were you in the queue to speak? I forget that one.
No.
Okay. But with that, are there any, anyone here who would wish to speak? Commissioner Dozier? Pardon?
Mr. I was wondering, you said the County Administrator said he had Speaker on 34, 33 and 34 closely tied. I actually kind of wanted to hear the speaker, if the speaker was speaking of something that's tied together. So I know the speaker's on 34, but can we hear the speaker now?
Madam County Attorney, can we do that and move it out of the agenda order?
We can move it out of order.
Yeah. Commissioner Maddox, that's a great suggestion. Thank you very much. Do we need to have a motion to change the order of the agenda, or should we just advance to the next?
No, I'm not asking to change the order.
Speaker order, because the speaker asked to speak on 34. So would you offer, would you offer a motion to change the order? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of changing the speaker order to have the speaker deliver comments now versus the next agenda, and say aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, with the exception of Vice Chair Proctor, who's out of chambers. Okay. So, Mr. County Administrator, would you please introduce the speaker for item 34?
Will do. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, just by way of a brief introduction, item number 34, request the board to conduct the first and only public hearing to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 5 of Leon County Code of Laws. This is our local building code in order to be consistent with recent changes to the Florida Building Code. We have a speaker on this item, Robert Watson.
Mr. Watson, sir, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Robert Watson, 2773 Vassar Road. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner... Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Administrator. I'm here on behalf of the TBA, and I came up to actually ask that we table number 34 for further review after the, doing due diligence after the final draft. We identified a few other items that we feel need to be discussed further and worked out. So I actually support the tabling of this issue. There are a few items, but I won't get into that unless you have specific questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Watson. Really appreciate you coming down here. Mr. County Attorney, Mr. County Administrator?
Commissioners, if it is your direction to do so, and I'll need the county attorney just to put us in the correct posture, I don't want to preempt any discussion of the board, just to say that this does not present a time issue for staff, and if you do table it or continue it to a time and date certain, we'd be happy to work with TPA on any remaining issues.
Commissioner Maddox.
So if they're tied, can we just do 33 and 34?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, you could move or make a motion to table the public hearings for items 33 and 34. If you do it to a date and time certain, for example, the January 26 meeting, 6:00 p.m., we would not have to renotice it.
Okay.
Or you can leave it open-ended, and we can renotice it, either way.
Would the January 26 meeting be enough time, Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners.
Yes, Commissioner, will be.
Thank you, sir. I'll make a motion to table items number 33 and 34 to our January 26 public hearings.
Thank you. Motion's been made, or seconded, with Commissioner Jackson. Any discussion on, any discussion on the motion to table? I have Commissioner Dozier up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Rob coming in today. I know you've been here a long time and got some other comments on this. Also had the email from the county administrator. So I just wanted to acknowledge the robust amount of work that our new building official and staff have done, and I'm really glad, even just reading the email and the agenda item, there's so much more collaboration with Towsey Builders Association, with other groups than we've had in past years. So just wanted to say that right now, that this could have been a very contentious item and, you know, without that engagement, and I don't hear that from TBA members or others, just that they want a little more time to review this, and I'm fully supportive of that. But I do appreciate how much effort our staff has made to work with TBA, AIA, all the other groups on this, and I look forward to seeing the item come back in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier, and I would, I would reiterate that. I mean, there's been a tremendous amount of work done on both the agenda of 33 as well as 34, and I want to really thank staff, because in my discussions I've had with folks in our community, there was a lot of compliments for the folks on our staff that have been working with them. So with that, there are no more speakers on the, on the queue. All those in favor of the motion to table items 33 and 34 until the January 26 meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, that brings us back to item number 29. This item seeks the board's consideration of the appointment of citizens to the Audit Advisory Committee, the Board of Adjustment Appeals, and to the Joint City-County Bicele Work Group. Eligible applicants are presented for your consideration in options 1 through 3. We have no speakers on this item.
All right, thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Anybody would like to speak on item 29?
Well, I, sorry.
Commissioner Jackson.
Well, we have two eligible applicants, and we have two positions to fill on the first one, correct? On option one?
That's correct.
Then I would recommend Cecil Bragg and Deidre Melton to the Audit Advisory Committee.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Jackson and seconded by Commissioner Dozier to accept the two eligible applicants for those two positions. All those in favors of the motion on its floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next, I, next, not next, agenda item, the next option.
The next option, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, is to appoint one citizen to the alternate seat of the Board of Adjustment Appeals for the remainder of an unexpired term. The eligible applicants are Ron Berger and Lamont Nelson.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Jackson. Maddox.
Thank you, sir. I'll tell you what, I'll just go ahead and do two and three. I'll go Ron Berger for option number two, and I'll go Chris Hudson, Scott Dudley, and Yvonne Stringer for option number three.
All right. Is there a second on the motion, Commissioner Jackson? So the motion's been made as stated by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson for the candidates in option two and three. All those opposed, say yea. All those in favor, say yea.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This item seeks the board to appoint commissioners to the Appalachian Regional Planning Council, the Big Bend Continuum of Care, the Canopy Road Citizen Committee, the CRTPA, the CSC, the Leon County Educational Facilities Authority, and the Research and Development Authority. In addition, commissioners, this would require us to make policy adjustments to reflect the appointments that you make. We have no speakers on this item, and we're recommending options one and two. Mr. Chairman, just let me know if you'd like me to facilitate.
All right. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. If you would help facilitate for the appointments for the individual committees, I'd appreciate it.
You've got it, Mr. Chairman. Option, option one, first, a full board appointment for a commissioner to the Appalachian Regional Planning Council for a two-year term.
I believe Commissioner Dozier's our appointee there.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox.
Continue to serve.
I'll, I'll second that if it hasn't been seconded yet. Did you second it, Commissioner Jackson?
It doesn't matter, you seconded.
We'll go for Commissioner Jackson.
Mr. Chair.
And then I have speakers for, Commissioner Dozier, do you want to speak?
All I wanted to say was thank you very much, and at the last meeting, I was elected chair of Appalachian Regional Planning Council. I will assume that role in January, so they are also very glad that I'm reappointed to the board.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Yes, it would have been. Thank you very much.
If I might say, and we do this sometimes, sometimes, but Commissioner Dozier has served us with extreme honor. She's taken a big leadership role with the Appalachian Regional Planning Council, and you can tell by the way she speaks at our CRTPA meetings, and even here, and some of the things that I'm most proud of is the small loan, the business loan program that she's helped facilitate there. So, hey, keep moving, man. Congratulations, you've done a great job. I'll make that motion with honor.
That's great. The motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner Jackson. All those in favor of the motion as stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Next up, one commissioner to the Big Bend Continuum of Care for the remainder of an unexpired term.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I, last month, Amanda Wander Wilkie of the Big Bend COC contacted me and asked me if I'd like to replace Commissioner Lindley, and I agree to do so, but of course, that's contingent on the will of the board here. I just want to go ahead and say that.
Commissioners, I move that our chairman would serve to replace Commissioner Lindley on the Big Bend Board of Continuum of Care.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Who's made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Maddox, as stated. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next committee, Mr. County Administrator.
Next up, one commissioner to the Canopy Road Citizen Committee for a two-year term.
Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, I am wondering if Commissioner Welch would be willing to serve on this board, because he lives on one of our most wonderful canopy roads. If you would be willing to, I'll make a motion for Commissioner Welch.
I second that.
All right, motions are made for Commissioner Welch by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Chair, on next item, the CRTPA Board. We had a conversation there amongst the members, we talked a little bit about replacing Commissioner Delo's appointment there, but there is a commissioner who was interested in it. I'm willing to hear it, but there was a time when it was just myself, Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Minor there. Commissioner Delo came along later and said he wanted to serve. Now, I don't believe, there's a whole bunch of funkiness there, because right now with him missing, we're missing a vote, because he was included in our vote, I believe. You want to clarify that?
If you want.
Yeah, please.
Because it's an annual appointment based on CRTPA's rules, so at the last meeting, Leon County had four appointed members, therefore, without one, we were, we were down the vote there. Do you want me to speak to the change that happened?
Go ahead. Well, I don't remember, I know the conversation we had was, we talked about maybe just going back to three, but we needed to finish out the fiscal year, and if there's a commissioner who wants to serve, I'm willing to appoint a commissioner, but understand that we need to have a conversation about the next, the next year, how it's going to look, if it's just three or four. Is that, is that what you all remember?
Commissioner Dozier.
If I could just add to that, the reason why we went from four members to three members a few years ago was because the CRTPA Board, which is made up of Gaston, Jefferson, Wakulla, and Leon, and Tallahassee, we decided to go to one member, one vote. It used to be weighted, so our other counties didn't have as much, as strong a voice there as city in Tallahassee and Leon did. So that took Leon to three votes. All the other counties agreed to it, but if Leon goes to four, that changes the dynamics on CRTPA, and they can't implement that decision by that board. It's our discretion, though. We can't, as you said, we can appoint a fourth member, but for your three sitting members, Commissioner Minor, or the chair, Commissioner Maddox, and myself, we did discuss this at CRTPA briefly, and it would be my inclination to honor the vote of the CRTPA Board and stick with three members, and we could debate who those members are. But as you said, I mean, if we want to stick with four, we can. If we go back to three, that's it for January, we will be whole in our votes, and the policy of CRTPA will stand going forward, so.
What is the city's representation?
The city's representation is the same. Yeah, it's the same as the counties, so that was balanced, it was three and three, and then one member from the other counties.
Right.
And one city in Gaston.
Right. So the question here is, is there any member that wants to serve? Because the only reason we ask is Commissioner Delo said he wanted to serve, so if there's not, we'll go back to three, if there is. I was on the, on the board, Commissioner, he wanted to serve, and I, I mean, I relinquished all that he could serve. I didn't have a call. But what time does it mean?
Let's go back to the, let's go back to the speakers' queue. So let me just say this, I feel the same way that Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Maddox do. I'm inclined to go back to the three, which would give us one person, one vote, but if there's someone here that really would like to serve as the fourth member, I, you know, I would support that. I feel the same way, I think, that Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Maddox do.
I don't see anybody. I see, I see, I'm waiting.
Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak?
You guys got three, three, three. I mean, that's fine.
Do you need a vote?
Okay. So do I hear, is there a motion that someone would like to make after this discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion to not appoint a fourth seat to CRTPA, hold Leon County's membership at three, 420 and 21.
Okay, motions are made.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Jackson has seconded the motion made by Commissioner Dozier to keep, to revert back to the three-member representation from the county commission. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next committee, Mr. County Administrator.
Chairman, next up, one commissioner for the Children's Services Council for a four-year term.
Chairman, I.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. As you all know, I served on the CSC Planning Committee for, I think it was about a year, and we laid a lot of groundwork for the CSC once, once it is established. You know, it was like proposing bylaws and the structure of how this would work, and also identifying the areas, suggestions to the CSC on where we thought, after extensive research, where we thought some of those areas might be that the CSC would want to focus on. I'd like to continue that work. If the board would be willing to support me in that, I'd be very honored.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, and I respect all the work that you've done. I circulated a memo to the board today, and with respect to, as I reread last night, the policy objectives of the CSC, as well as its organization, the desire for it to reflect our community, its interest in, in issues of poverty and the nature of poverty, and when I looked more carefully at who would serve, the judge, the children and families, superintendent, all those folk, I happened to saw an article in today's newspaper reflective of Carolyn Cummings. And with all due respect to the work that you've done, I'd like to nominate Carolyn Cummings for the reasons that I set forth today and asked the board to give her a new member on a brand-new board, the prerogative of serving on the Children's Services Council, follow the statutory bases which have been cited, which I think she fulfills a number of those categories.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Any discussion? Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Cummings, this is a really, really hard one for me, because I only got the memo from Commissioner Proctor this afternoon. I think he makes a very, very good case, and we so rarely have any conflict on commission appointments here. It's a lot of times just kumbaya. I do have to say that the chairman has put in a tremendous amount of time on the planning group, and I think some of that history coming into the CSC, particularly in the next year, is going to be really important, and I would like to make a case for our chair to serve in that seat. I would love to hear your thoughts about it. Again, this is a really, really hard place to be. I think you would be great on that board. It's because of that history that I would like to make a substitute motion, but I really don't want to make a substitute motion, so I, I would love to hear your thoughts, ma'am, on this, if you want to say anything, but I, I appreciate your dedication to this, Mr. Chair, and I think you stepped up more than any of us and attended those meetings, so I think you would be a very good fit for CSC.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Cummings.
Yes, Mr. Chair. You know, with all due respect, I'm sure you would be a great member of the Children's Services Council, and I certainly respect all the work that you did as part of the initial committee that got it on the ballot. However, I would be interested in being the commission representative on the council. I have been involved in children's issues my entire legal career, and that experience spans everywhere from support of our children, from dependency cases involving Department of Children and Families, and of course, those dependency cases involve sheltered and non-sheltered cases, and of course, the sheltered cases involve our children that where there are allegations of neglect and abuse. So I have been involved with children issues the full gambit throughout my legal career and even now, and I believe that my advocacy for children would be essential. I'm also concerned about the citizens of Leon County as well, and I recognize that this is a taxing agency, and I believe that I would be a great asset and an advocate for the citizens of Leon County, and I would be clearly concerned about transparency, I'd be concerned about the taxing authority and the extent that taxpayers would be taxed pursuant to the statutory language that allows the establishment of the Children's Services Council. So I would certainly be committed, I believe that I would be a great representative on the council for, for this commission, for the Leon County Commission, and that's just my position, but I certainly understand and we clearly respect the decision of this body.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings.
You make a powerful case, ma'am.
Well, if, for those of you that are watching this meeting, this is how it works. We are not allowed to talk about these appointments outside of a public meeting, so you're actually seeing the discussion that we are having in the public, because we could not have it in private, and we shouldn't have it in private. So let me go ahead, Commissioner Cummings, thank you very much for stepping up. This is a very, very important council. I've said before, when I was advocating for this, that it's probably one of the most important things we all can be doing, is investing in our kids, and I was very, very pleased to see that the Leon County voters passed this with almost 66% of the vote. That's an overwhelming majority. I've got quite a bit of experience in, in providing service delivery to children in this county. I served on the Board of the Shelter about 10, 12 years ago, also spent three years as a. Also spent three years as the CEO of Second Harvest of the Big Ben, which provides food and directly assists those children who are suffering from food insecurity in this county, of which there are now 30% since the pandemic started. So I feel very strongly about this issue. I'm committed to it. I think I've demonstrated that to the public and to all of you in my advocacy for it leading up to the election, and would ask for your support. So with that, seeing no speakers, all's in favor of the motion for Commissioner Cummings to serve on the CSC?
Oh, no, no, no. It was a substitute motion for you.
I'm sorry, a substitute motion. No.
Yeah. Mr. Chair...
Did you make the substitute motion?
No.
I... Mr. Chair, if you don't mind?
Yeah, sure. Commissioner Dozier.
I said I was thinking about making a substitute motion. I wanted to, and I didn't want to, because this is a very difficult position.
I'm just hurt. I apologize.
Again, I didn't receive the memo or know who else was interested until today. And Commissioner Cummings, you make a strong case for yourself. So I think either of you would represent this Board very, very well. Yeah, I'm going to leave it there, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor, it's an original motion made by Commissioner Proctor and seconded by Commissioner Jackson, is for Carolyn Cummings, Commissioner Cummings to serve on the CSC. All's in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
So that is four. So it is Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Maddox, and Commissioner Proctor. Okay. All right. And I'll make it unanimous. So the motion is unanimous. Congratulations, Commissioner Cummings. All right. Next committee.
One commissioner for the Leon County Educational Facilities Authority.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for Commissioner Welch for the EFA.
Second.
All right. Motion's are made by Commissioner Maddox, seconded by Commissioner, Vice Chair Proctor. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
I assume that speech would object.
Speech. You know, in all honesty, I don't really have a real grasp of what they do, so it's got education in it. I assume it fits my cup of tea, so I'm fine.
Yes, I heard. Any other motions? Any other motions? Look, Mr. County Administrator, if there's no one that would like to make a motion, should we table this until the next meeting?
I'm sorry, you've got a motion.
I just wanted to accept.
Oh, I thought you said decline. I'm sorry. It's actually harder to hear with a plexiglass. I thought you declined. My apologies. So, okay, the motion. Motion was made. All's in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Next committee.
And then finally, Mr. Chairman, your final one is one commissioner for the Leon County Research and Development Authority for a four-year term.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for Commissioner Dozier.
Second.
All right. Motion's are made by Commissioner Maddox and seconded by Vice Chair Proctor for Commissioner Dozier to serve on the Leon County R and D Authority. Seeing, Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, I just have to acknowledge this. With any other Board at this point, I would recognize that I've served for a long time on Innovation Park, and we tend to sometimes have that happen, but often move off and on to other Boards. I didn't want to cough in the microphone. Given the years-long effort for the incubator, and we just received that grant, I am chairing the Committee for Architectural, RFQ for an architect and engineering forum for that incubator. It's something I've worked on for a while, so I thought about this one a lot, but I really do appreciate the nomination. And if anyone else would like to get involved with Innovation Park, there is a foundation now for the incubator labs, and I know that Ron Miller would love for anybody else to get involved in that. Madam County Attorney, we could vet this, but I don't think there's any sunshine because it's a completely separate Board. But there are other opportunities, and it's a really important project. So I welcome anyone else who wants to get involved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dozier. I can't remember. Have we did the vote on this yet? Okay. All's in favor of the motion for Commissioner Dozier to serve on another term as the Leon County R and D Authority. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Chairman, if we can get a motion for option two as well on this item, that would be great.
Motion's are made by Commissioner Maddox for option two, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. All's in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, citizens to be heard on non-agenda items.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker under citizens to be heard, Stanley Sims.
All right, Mr. Sims, you have three minutes. Sir, name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. First off, Chairman, I want to say thank you for humbling and allowing County Commissioner Carolyn Cummings to serve on the CSC. That CSC needs diversity, and I'm very excited for County Commissioner Cummings to bring that diversity at a high level. What brings me up here today is care ain't working. People are hurting. The system is not right. I applied for cares and have not received any money, been turned down for everything. And Ms. Dozier, you sent in the income verification form. I talked to Mr. Sheeney. They have my income at $107,000. You think I would be around here driving a used, old 95 truck if I made $107,000 a year? But here's the thing that bothers me. Him knowing that he has wrong information that disqualifies me from funds, but tells me it cannot be reconciled. And I'm not the only one that they have got bad information, and when people call to say that's not true, they don't want to change it. They just want to deny them. And then Ms. Marian Langley, before she left, she directed this staff not to treat these people like they trying to steal some money. And that's what's going down. They are asking people to have their boss to write letters confirming that they work. We got the poor and the working poor. If you gave out a million dollars right now to all of the poor people who got cellphones, you think every person in the poor folks gonna get a cellphone? No, because then you gonna say, the phone has to be in your name. People got cellphones that ain't in their names. People got utility bills that ain't in their names. People live in houses that don't have leases that not in their names. I'm gonna close with this. Saturday, a 23-year-old girl with two children put out.
Thank you, Mr. Sims, for your time. Appreciate it.
Somebody help me up.
Mr. County Administrator, does that conclude our speakers?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to comments and discussion items, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items as an update. At the last meeting, the Board did authorize the Chairman to sign the letter to EPA in support of the QBO process associated with Lake Taquen and the remediation of that impaired water body. That letter did go out. We've also solicited letters of support from others, and just want to let you know that U.S. Representative Al Lawson and Representative, State Representative Alexandra have also issued letters of support, and U.S. Representative Al Lawson even offered to reach out and follow up with the EPA directly. So really appreciate the additional support we're getting from some of the other people who have invested interest in that issue. Also, just to confirm, the face covering emergency ordinance is legal. That case is now final. The first DCA dismissed the appeal of that emergency ordinance. They just failed to basically prosecute it at the appellate level, so we'll take that win, manage to save the county some money in appellate fees, so that was good. Thank you. Hope everyone has a wonderful holiday. Stay safe.
Is that your first victory as county attorney?
Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, I just wanted to take this opportunity to wish everybody happy holidays, all county employees, and to each of you and your families, happy holidays, and I know we all look forward to 2021.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Okay, going through discussion items by commissioners, let's just go down the line. Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Community Raiders are playing in the semifinal of the High School, Florida High School Athletic Association this Friday night at Capital Circle, I mean, Capital Stadium, Gene Cott Stadium. And we're inviting those persons who can and are willing to socially distance, cover your mouth, and watch the Raiders beat up on this little team coming up here, and we want you to come out. I'm asking all Baby Rattlers to be there with me, as we support Southside Schools, Southside Love, to Raiders, go Raiders, and with that visiting team. Commissioners, in support of the, we've been asked for $5,000 by Congressman Al Lawson in support of his, it's probably about the 30th or 32nd annual tournament, Christmas tournament, and I think that there's been a prohibition because we don't award to events which induce public gathering. The Congressman has asked if we're willing to modify and not support for the ask of 5,000, if we would take perhaps $1,000 or $1,500 to support as a booster or supporter for the paperwork, the printout of the book, souvenir booklet, that's what I'm trying to say. And is that contentious? Is that volutive of our policy? Mr. County Administrator, what's your understanding? Do we need to vote, or what?
Mr. County Administrator.
The Board can appropriate $1,000 for any organization that you all determine is in the public interest.
Commissioners, I would motion $1,000 in support of the printing of materials for the Christmas tournament by Congressman Lawson.
Motion's been made and seconded, made by Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Any discussion? Commissioner Dozier.
Just quickly, I think to single, I mean, you make a good case, Commissioner Proctor, but to single one event out, given our discussion earlier about all the different events, I just can't get there. We gotta apply the same standards across the Board, but I understand the challenge, and it's coming up fast, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I'm gonna be calling Congressman Lawson after this and apologize, but I'm also not gonna support it. I don't think it's appropriate for us to identify one organization at the expense of others. So with that in mind, all those in favor of the motion stated by Commissioner Proctor and seconded by Commissioner Maddox, say aye.
Aye.
So it is Commissioner Welch, Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Maddox, and Commissioner Vice Chair Proctor. All's opposed, say nay. Nay. So it's Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Dozier, and myself, and nay. But the ayes have it, four, three. Next...
Point of order. It was not unanimous. It does not pass. We're in commissioner time.
Correct. Correct. Thank you, Madam County Attorney. Mr. Vice Chair Proctor, I'm sorry, the motion does not carry forward.
Okay. Sure, sure. Thank you. Reverend Fouts lives on, I think he lives in your district, and Reverend Fouts has indicated his desire for city sewer. He lives across the street from Hawks Rise School. He lives across the street from Ox Bottom, and his community is divested from sewer service. He does not have city gas, even though the high-pressured pipe of city gas is buried in his front yard, but he is not a recipient of that gas that bypasses his home. For years, the city limit, if you want to call it that, allows for the east side of Meridian Road to be in the city limit, but the west side, the Paramore State area, the area of Reverend Fouts lives, where all the black people live, they're not in the city's limit. They're across the street from Hawks Rise, they're across the street from Summerbrook, they're across the street from, and that line is a segregation line that denies services. Oh, with the exception that in recent, three, four years ago, that development down Gardner Road, and there's a new development, mostly white, new homes, white people live back there, they have city, the option for city gas, they have central sewer, and they're on the west side of Meridian. City is practicing racial discrimination, and, you know, for years, we've sought to get relief for your constituent, Ms. Minor, but it started before you. Mayor Daley is fully aware in the prize of distinction with which the city treats citizens on the west side of Meridian and the citizens on the east side of Meridian. I don't know what we can do, but I'm asking if this commission can, because I can't understand what constitutes city services on the white side of the street and city denial of services where the black people live. And I'm asking our Board, because that's the county, that we would stand up and represent them for the same services that gas is in these people's yard, but they can't get none. Something's wrong. So I'm asking our Board to support, because it takes, I guess, the majority of us to want to see right occur at some point. In the last straw, and I need to disclose and make clear, that that Gardner Road, that my great-grandmother is a Gartner, and that Gardner Road for years was just a red clay and a little store, but they've done some wonderful things back there. But the people who've moved there in the last four years, they have everything that the people on the other side. It seems to be a white thing, and the black folk can't get none. And I'm asking Board if you all would support and join in giving our staff impetus and the strength to find out, how do we annex these people who are being disenfranchised and services are gerrymandered all around people of color? That's the final point of the night. And I think that Christmas will come in a meaningful way if the county was able to secure from the city a commitment to not to be colorblind and to stop being racial about who can, because from Childs High School, which is about six or seven miles from the Georgia Line, we can send sewer back down to the airport, but Reverend Fouts and them can't, and something's wrong with that. So I'm asking commissioners for, I guess I'd say, a motion, like to move, Mr. Chairman, that we empower city, county staff, our legal team, our administrator, to pursue resolution in a reconciling of these distinctions up there on the north end of the county, Commissioner Minor's district. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Proctor. By the way, my district is not on the east side of Meridian. But the motions are made. Is there a second?
I'm not sure I can second the motion, but I do think, Commissioner Proctor, if you have that concern, maybe a conversation between the county administrator and the city manager with a report back to us as to what he gets back might be warranted. So I'm not sure, because the motion, I didn't quite understand exactly what you're asking, but if you have that... but if you have that concern as commissioner, I could go as far as seeing if the county administrator would be willing to have a conversation with the city manager to get some answers to any questions that you may have in that range of the issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. And Vice Chair Proctor, I would follow in line with what Commissioner Maddox has said. I think, you made the motion, sir, and if it has a second, we'll follow through on it. Even if it doesn't have a second, I think the county administrator can look into this and report back to us.
I can withdraw the motion. I did not want my county administrator to be timid, because when it comes to racial issues, sometimes you need a whole vote of a board. There's some issues that we just don't go over there unless they got the backing. It's weird. Some issues we can get a great discussion on, some you need la di da di, everybody's like, well, we can't think official on that. So the city is not only doing that on Meridian. Check the record, the city's limit stops on black neighborhoods up Centerville Road. It's just the city, that's what they do. They do that on the south side. So at some point or the other, the reality of what it is, and if we need to empower our county attorney with a vote from us that is meaningful to us, I was willing to make that motion. But if we have the wherewithal and backbone and strength to go over there and do that without a vote, fine. I just didn't want to leave them without our support that they needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Proctor. Any other comments, sir? Okay, Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing as far as policies concerned. Did, since we're not gonna have a meeting for another month or so, to wish my baby girl Miley a happy birthday. She will turn nine on the 16th. And also to tell my girls congratulations on a job well done out in Stark, Florida, in their last competition. They brought home some trophies, they did a good job, I'm proud of my babies. And to let you all know, this is all family stuff, all about the kids, man, that my baby girl Nyla, my oldest, is getting braces and she's super excited. So you guys be on the lookout for her medal coming soon, and I hope you guys have a happy holiday. I enjoy serving on this board. I often wondered, as we've seen, if we saw commissioners transition out, new commissioners coming in, what the field of the board would be, what we would be like. And I think we still have a good makeup. We have a good board here. People care about the community, community care about the districts, and can care about the community at large. And so it's an honor to serve with you all. Happy holidays, I look forward to seeing you after New Year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Starting off with where Commissioner Maddox left off, a great new board, and Commissioner Cummings is looking great on the front page of the Democrat today. So, well done, it's a great picture and good article. And I guess reflecting this weekend on missing yet one more in a long, long line of community events that are just so dear to my heart, and that's the Winter Festival Parade, and my niece and nephew, and your kids, Commissioner Maddox, and all the others, I mean, that's where they got to see each other, was on the parade, and really missing that. That brings me to, and I have no asks here, well, maybe one, we'll get there. I find myself recently reflecting on how grateful I am for our community who has had each other's backs throughout this difficult time and continues to do that. And one of the things that really stuck out to me, I had a briefing with our OEV staff and blueprint staff yesterday, we were talking about OEV's focus on Small Business Saturday and the Love Your Local campaign, and I started looking at the other local campaigns, shop local campaigns. I know that I'm missing some, but just to highlight a couple of the people that are really trying to help our local businesses. Women's Wednesday has a pledge, 10% or more of your spending for Christmas or Hanukkah, New Year's to spend on local. We've got Downtown Improvement, or Downtown Improvement, DIA, Elizabeth mentioned it today, the market, there's a lot of opportunities for our small entrepreneurs and vendors to get out. And a personal little shout out, since it's Family Day, my sister Vanessa Rouse has a podcast called Let's Get Local, and she decided to do something a little different this year, 25 days of local gifts. And every day, she's highlighting a local business, she's taking suggestions, and just really helping people get ideas about finding local gifts. All of those people are doing it on their own initiative and OEV on our behalf, and all of that helps our local businesses, just adds the cares dollars and everything else. So I wanna give a big shout out to all of them. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I know you intended the event, I wasn't able to, but Sustainable Tallahassee, the Rags to Bags initiative, but they were actually creating masks, and they created over 15,000 masks this year to help, and there have been a lot of other volunteers in the community, but that is just incredible. So to them and to every single person who's wearing a mask, who's taking care of each other, this is how we're gonna get through it. And, Mr. Chairman, I guess this is the part I was getting a little bit, I don't know if this is an ask or not, but I wondered if we could do something in the new year, I don't know if this is take nominations or something else, but to recognize the local community volunteers and heroes who've been coming up with really creative ways to support our community, volunteer hours. I know there's a lot of businesses that are doing their things, but volunteering to find ways to help support our community. I'd just love to hand it off to our already overtaxed staff to see if there was something we could do, but, Mr. County Administrator, I'm so reluctant to do that because you all have way, way too much on your plate right now. So I will, this could wait till the end of 2021, but we got a lot of people in the community that we could recognize and thank, and I'd just love for us to put some thought into that. Again, we could wait until after the pandemic if we need. Yep. We.
Commissioner Maddox.
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Chairman, if, I was actually thinking of, you know, our website's pretty stout, and even our Facebook page and social media, if we could have people nominate a volunteer of the month, and maybe highlight that person on our website and on the Facebook page, and maybe if we have an opportunity, had a person come and actually, we see them. So that way, I mean, so many people, you know, you could do it a month at a time versus just, because we're not gonna be able to have large events. But I like the idea of recognizing those, because, I mean, people are really doing an awesome job of looking out for each other and being volunteers and doing what they have to do to make sure our community sustains. So if you would entertain that, I think that would be.
Well, I like that idea. Mr. County Administrator, why don't I tee this up? You've heard a little bit of discussion here, just make a motion if there is a way that's not too overly taxing for our wonderful staff, and particularly if you could involve the board to give us some work to do on this, perhaps. We'd love a way to recognize some of our community heroes, our volunteers who've been helping people get through the pandemic.
We can do that.
Yeah, thank you, sir. That's my motion. Are you seconding that? Did you second that?
Oh, yeah, seconded.
He's eating candy. Forgive me, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dozier, can you restate your motion?
Yeah, just a motion to give our staff the option to look at some way of recognizing our community volunteers who have helped support each other, businesses, public health through the pandemic. But again, not too overtaxing.
Okay, motions are made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All in favor of the motion as stated, signify by saying yea. Aye. All opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all. It's been quite a year for all of us, and with that, I hope we all stay home, stay on Zoom, stay on the phone, keep each other safe, and have a wonderful holidays. I'm gonna kick it off tomorrow, judging the library's gingerbread house competition. And so this is where I'll lead you. If you have not looked at this page, it's on our website, Mr. County Administrator, we could email this out to the board, 2020 Community Gingerbread House Competitions. To everyone who submitted one, they are fabulous, there's even a gingerbread pirate ship. It's awesome. So I'm really looking forward to tomorrow's competition. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, a couple of items for business. I don't know exactly how to present them, whether it be a motion or in an agenda item. The development or the exploration of bicycling opportunities in District 2, there are officially no specific bicycling trails. Recently, one of our friends was struck by a vehicle while bicycling in the community for, you know, for health and exercise. And more specifically, 375, also considered Smith Creek Highway, is considered a Florida scenic highway, and maybe in conjunction with DOT, find out what their future plans are for that. What I need to do on that, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Administrator.
Commissioner, we do have a project in the works on Smith Creek for bike lanes now. Alan, do you wanna provide an update on that? I know we were just discussing it.
That posture, we have received dollars from the state to do mileage, to do specific bike lanes, to actually fund the design and construction. I think we finished up some of the preliminary design work and we're moving towards construction of it, but the funds have been allocated by the DOT for Smith Creek Highway, four bike lanes are ready, and the board hasn't approved that previously.
Great, it's a really cool, in fact, he was struck on that highway, and it's a great way to get some exercise in, but it's also extremely dangerous. So, sounds like we're, do I need to do anything further, or do I need to ask for anything additionally?
I think we got it.
Okay, good deal.
Anything else, Commissioner Jackson?
Yes, I'll try to be brief, promise. Commissioner Minor, great job, man. Mr. Chairman, Minor, great job. You are moving us along and getting things done, and I think that's key, and today's meeting was expedient and useful, but at the same time, meaningful. The second thing is homeless encampments popping up that aren't official shelters for homeless folks. I'll just use one as an example, a pop-up sleeping location at White Drive in Pensacola Street. There are folks, when I leave here tonight, in the darkness, with the temperatures I haven't looked lately, but I'm assuming it's gonna be chilly, that are gonna be asleep at a former car wash in a parking lot on concrete. Now, I realize that we've done everything we can to provide information to these folks, but the last thing I'd like to see, or that I want to see, is to have even one person pass away or become seriously ill, because we haven't done everything we can. So although we've done everything we can, maybe just a status update or a status report on how we're reaching out to those encampments and discouraging, number one, because in many cases, it's violating our current CDC guidelines, but secondly, it's just dangerous for folks to be sleeping outside with temperatures or this low. And it happens in 32310 and 32304 on the regular. It's a great concern on the Pensacola Street corridor, and I'd love for us to, I'm not saying it doesn't happen all over town, because I know that you folks probably pass them as well, but if we could somehow get a status report on educating and taking care of our homeless, since the carney shelter has farmed those folks out to different locations. Those are the two businesses.
Commissioner Jackson, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you. Can you make a motion on that, please? We have.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll make a motion to come back with a status report or an agenda item regarding homeless encampments within the county limits.
Any discussion? Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chairman, because that would come back in our next meeting, I'm guessing, I appreciate the county administrators.
We're in the peak of the winter season, so the sooner the better.
Right, but for an agenda item, that's what I was gonna ask Commissioner Jackson, it could be an email and an agenda item, because we don't have another meeting until January, and that will be around the time of the continuum of cares point in time count.
It will be.
And they're going out.
Good point.
Yeah, so we could wrap some of that information. I love the idea of the agenda item, but maybe an email in addition to that, that could come with the Cold Night Shelters and other information we're getting from the county.
Yeah, is that a reasonable request, Mr. Administrator?
We can do that.
All right.
That would be great, even better.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox, you left out one very important date.
Yep. Yeah, Commissioner Jackson, I'm sorry, let's go ahead and vote on the motion.
Oh, we have to.
Continue with your remarks. All in favor of the motion as stated by Commissioner Jackson, seconded by Commissioner Dozier? Oh, Commissioner Maddox, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Well, Commissioner Maddox did leave out one very important date coming up. I know he doesn't want to be reminded of this, but he will join many of us on the other side of the mountain very, very soon, much sooner than he wanted. So I wanted to wish him a happy birthday, and prescribe, in your court, I've prescribed several different things you need to get prepared for. Go ahead and start setting your doctor's appointments now, and get ready. If you make it to 50, I'm gonna finally challenge you in a 40-yard dash race, as long as you give me 20 yards head start. But, yeah, you have a birthday coming up, and wanted to wish you a happy birthday and all that. All of you, I wanna wish a happy holiday season. Like Commissioner Maddox mentioned, we meet together, and we have a tendency to not always see eye to eye, but we also have the maturity and the ability to leave it on the field. And I think that, for the most part, every single subject that we take on here involves a level of human care, and that is important to me. That's something I hold very dear to myself. One last word on the printing materials for Commissioner Lawson's tournament, I wanna make it clear that that's not anything against Commissioner Lawson. I'm sure that it's an awesome tournament, but I am of the opinion that we do, when we make decisions during this time of pandemic, Vince, or excuse me, Mr. Administrator Long talks about mitigating versus promoting. Every move that we make and every decision we make either mitigates the spread of COVID, which means slows it, or keeps it where it's at, or it promotes the spread. And I think it's important that we be as uniform as possible when we're considering those two items. Happy holidays to all of you, I hope to see you on the other side.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. I also have sentiments regarding Commissioner Jackson's comments regarding homeless population. I think that has been adequately taken care of, and I wait for that report. But I want to commend the county administrator and the staff on how they're addressing the cold weather shelters and allocating locations for individuals. It's a great concern in the area, in the Frenchtown area, right in the middle of where my law firm is. Many individuals, on any given night, sleep on our premises, on the front porch, on the back porch, so that's a great concern. But I also wanna give kudos to the county administrator and the staff for how they're addressing the needs of the citizens with additional CARES Act funding, and the expediency of which they will get that assistance out to the individuals that have applied, whose applications have already gone through the pike. I think we recognize that this is our straits, people are unemployed, individuals are being thrown out on the street, which accounts for some of the homelessness, you know, the percentages and the increase in the homelessness right now. So I think it's a good thing that we recognize our citizens are in need, and it's important, I believe, that we as the commission address the needs of those citizens. So I don't have anything actionable to say, but other than the kudos, and I also appreciate the vote of confidence that has been given to me tonight by the members of the commission as far as the Children's Services Council. And finally, I wish all of you all Merry Christmas, Prosperous New Year, as we continue to take care of the business of the citizens of Lehigh County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief. I want to again reiterate my thanks to the county administrator and his staff for helping me bridge the gap to get in my office going. In the three weeks since Commissioner Cummings and I were sworn in, we've both been able to get everything up and running. I've been able to get everything up and running, and the county administrator and his staff have helped us do that very quickly, so I wanted to reiterate my thanks for that. Thank you all for welcoming me and continuing to support me, and I am looking forward to the next four years, and I'm very excited about the opportunity. I wanted to request my first proclamation. I wanted to request my first proclamation tonight for the next meeting on January 26. As a school teacher, you guys can imagine, I interact with a lot of young people every day, and young people do awesome things every day, and so I have this unique platform to be able to give them some big kudos. And so one of my students at Childs, who's also a neighbor of mine in Centerville Conservation Community, is a young lady named Macy Hartman, and she is going to be amongst the first crop of female Eagle Scouts that will be awarded December 15. So Macy is a tremendous young lady. She's a ninth grader at Childs. She has a brother also at Childs, who's also going to be an Eagle Scout. They are a remarkable family, have traveled the world as a military family, and they do really incredible things, and they are amazing young people. And Macy, you know, as you may have seen in the Tallahassee Democrat, is, you know, doing something pretty tremendous, and I'd like to honor her at the next meeting on January 26. I would appreciate your support for that, so I guess I would be making a motion.
Yeah, all in favor of the motion of the proclamation as noted by Commissioner Welch? In favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Your first motion, or your first proclamation is unanimous.
Thank you all very much, and I hope you have a great holiday and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch. Okay, just to wrap things up, I want to thank, I want to say happy birthday, Commissioner Maddox, turning 40 on Friday. That's a big number, by the way. That's pretty, that's pretty old. As someone who's 52 and can barely remember turning 40. Two quick things. I'd like to, actually, I can't issue a motion on this, but I'm hoping someone might offer a motion for a proclamation from Altamis Barnes. Altamis Barnes, she's, as you know, the founding director of the Raleigh Center and Museum. Thank you. Mission made by Commissioner Maddox and seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. All in favor, say aye? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Second, I'd like to have an additional proclamation for Cara Fleischer and a team of volunteers who reconstructed the platform for Leon Sinks. You may have seen the photos of this. It's terrific. It's not a county facility, but still, I think it's a great amenity for Leon County. Motion made by Commissioner Dozier. Is there a second? By Commissioner Jackson. All's in favor, say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Jackson, I really want to thank you for bringing up the homelessness agenda item. I went to the Cold Night Shelter to visit with the folks that were there last week, and participated briefly in the city's workshop on homelessness earlier today. And one thing that, and I'll talk about, this is a segue to another thing, but after speaking with Amanda at the Continuum of Care, I mean, there are 800, 900 people currently that are homeless in Leon County. But with a little bit of help, a little bit of help, we can help about 70% of those with some assistance of some sort, and a relatively short-term length of assistance, meaning some type of aid with security deposits, which the city took up today, and I think is going to make a very strong step forward for. But there are things that we need to do, I think, to help folks that are struggling with homelessness. And key to that is making sure we treat them with compassion and dignity. I had an interview with a TV reporter last week where it was only a three-minute segment, and you can only get so much in a three-minute segment, but I wasn't able to convey that, the longer-term solutions for homelessness in that news segment. And so I think it might have been misconstrued by a number of people. But I really wanted to make a point that there are a lot of great people working on that issue. They have been working on it for years. And Commissioner Jackson, with your agenda item that's coming up, we'll be able to get more detail on that, so thank you. Next thing, I want to just give a quick heads up on the strategic planning session that we're going to have into January. Two things you may have heard about already through other, not publicly from me, not privately from me, but I have asked, I will ask, this board for helping to establish a Monroe Task Force for North Monroe. For the folks that are at large, and you may have seen the same type of comments that I've been receiving, a lot of people are very concerned about the businesses and the neighbors that live in nearby neighborhoods, about the perception that that front door of Tallahassee is in decline. And so I'll save it for later, but I want to give you a heads up on that. Second thing, as you all know, I used to work at Second Harvest. When I was there, Feeding Florida, which is a statewide network of food banks, commissioned a study on food insecurity that goes down to, not the census tract, not the zip code, but down to the neighborhood block group level. That is an incredible level of granularity. That's about roughly, in population, about the size of an apartment complex. So for the first time, we're able to look down at a low level of granularity and be able to apply real policy to help those that are struggling with food insecurity. I'll talk about it more at the strategic planning session, but I want to give you a heads up on that. Their, Feeding Florida, Second Harvest, others, I think, are willing to work with us on really seriously, for the first time, taking a look at an area at a level of detail that we can do something about, and then do some things. So that's coming in January. Also wanted to just thank everybody for a great meeting. I think we did a pretty good job keeping the time down and keeping everybody safe as we could. I want to wish everybody happy holidays. I know we're going to see each other at Blueprint, but for the staff and for the public that we may not see until the holidays, just Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year. Yes, Commissioner Dozier.
I forgot one of the most important things. This will take less than 30 seconds. Last week, the Floor Association of Counties held our legislative conference. It was hybrid, very small attendance, and Commissioner Welch, I think you participated in the, and Commissioner Cummings as well. I heard both your names. Thank you. They're in the Certified County Commissioner Training Program. But I also wanted to say that Leon County has once again been awarded the Innovation Award for our Created Equal Series, which is fantastic. We were one of just a handful of counties who received that award, and I promise, even though I'm chair of ICG Board and had, you know, worked on that committee, I didn't have any influence whatsoever, and I was just thrilled and actually surprised when Leon's name came up, not because it wasn't a stellar program, but because we've won before, and it is a testament to how great that program is. So congratulations, Mr. County Administrator, all your staff who works on that, and it was well-received at FAC last week. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Really briefly.
Really, really briefly, just since you brought up FAC. Mr. County Administrator, Eric was so complimentary of what you guys are doing with him, with the new commissioners coming in. I did want to let the opportunity, we got the Innovation Award, but we're basically, Leon County is basically leading up what new commissioners are being taught across the state about what it means to be a commissioner. And it's not just because, from what you're saying, it's not just because FAC is just right down the street, it's because they think we do it right here. So I wanted to give kudos to the county administrator and staff for being the organization that FAC looks at as, as far as bringing their new commissioners in, we do it the right way. So good job by staff and you, yourself, Mr. County Administrator.
Well, we do vote for a high grade.
Commissioner Maddox.
I mean, we vote for a high grade.
Mr. Vice Chair, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. The money that we had designated for the homeless, and the 11 million, Commissioner Dozier's comment and the chairman's comment, is that retroactive for the homeless shelters pay out to halls, people in hotels, or is that new money proactive going forward?
Mr. County Administrator.
And to simplify it as much as I can, there were two sets of issues tonight. One was the remainder of the existing $52 million, and one portion of that was the new $11 million. On the remainder of the existing $52 million, there's 4.26 million left over, and a big chunk of that went to exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Proctor. 1.3 plus million went to homelessness.
Retroactive payment.
Well, it's actually a FEMA match for all the hotel night stays and some additional equipment and PPE for other homeless shelters. And the other 11 million is really more intended to help avoid new homelessness situation by paying utilities and rent and mortgage payment.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. County Administrator, any other items? Any other items? Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All right, this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.